Good morning. We are going to call the November 17th, 2020 Scott County Board of Commissioners meeting to order.
From the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with their...
Thank you very much. We are, once again, at full strength. Three of us here, two of us online. We have always been wearing our masks in and out of the building. We're trying something a little bit new here, keeping them on. So hopefully this all comes through on the microphones, which I, we have new microphones, which they may be a little bit loud. But, all right, let's move on to item number two, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments to the agenda? I do not see any, but I want to give an opportunity because you never know. Otherwise, we're going to let them stand as distributed. Item number three, approved minutes of the November 3rd, 2020 county board meeting. We've had those distributed in advance so we can peruse them. Are there any changes?
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of those minutes.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on item number three? Otherwise, as per the norm, since we have some folks here and some folks online, we are going to have the new JJ is going to give us a roll call vote. Good morning, JJ.
Good morning, commissioners. Welcome, Mr. Eberki.
Hi.
Sorry, Commissioner Beer.
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf.
Aye.
Commissioner Ulrich.
Aye.
We have one more.
Sorry, Commissioner Beard.
Oh, yeah, good. So we're all learning because we've got new mics where we're supposed to touch them to talk, and then clean them, of course, after. And so we're a little bit, little bit different, so bear with us on our technology. But that did pass. Moving on to item number four, recognition of interested citizens. Always a high point. This is an opportunity for folks to come and talk to the board about anything that is not on the agenda. It's a great opportunity. We've had folks come online and via Zoom in these fun days of the Rona, but I am not seeing anybody trying to come in the hallway. We do have people at the doors if that is needed. Otherwise, we're going to move on to item number five. We're going to receive information on Scott County delivers our specialty courts. We're going to have some folks come back in. Oh, is that not? Oh, this one. Yeah, I appreciate. No, you're right. Let's turn that one on. Let's turn that one on. All right, Chris, are you going to take it away for us for our Scott County delivers?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
We're socially distanced in the room. We've had some people come and go, so we can keep the numbers according to standards. So we're doing all those fun things. So much to be thankful for this Thanksgiving season, all these little ebbs and flows. Sometimes you got to find, look for them. That's what we're going to do. We're choosing to do that. Enjoy this, Deb. This is one of your last screen changes, you know?
I'm counting the days.
Just changing screens for...
See, she's already teaching me.
See, that's good. That's good. Changing screens for our folks online and in the room. So thanks for bearing with us.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners.
Good morning.
We are delighted this morning to have a large group of folks available to talk with us about specialty courts. And Captain Haas and I, from the Sheriff's Department, are going to start off some questioning, and we certainly invite you to jump in as you wish, but we will leave time at the end for the commissioners' questions. I'd like to have the panelists introduce themselves in just one second. But first, I want to remind you that the specialty court is on your agenda once a year, and we have brought this back partly to monitor it when it was on a grant. Now it is no longer on a grant, and we continue to monitor how this program impacts recidivism in our communities. It's a great example of bringing together services to address a high needs, high-risk population as a way to reduce recidivism, and really as an example of the things we like to see in terms of working across departments and working with community partners. Last year, you encouraged us to bring forward more outcome data, and so you're going to see a little more of that this year. And in the process of preparing for today, we've had conversations about further development. So more this year, more to come next year. The last things I want to just point out before we turn it over to the panelists is this. So... Let's have some help.
Can I work through it?
Yep.
Did you get the screen you want, or we need to...
Nope, I need to go back one screen. I need to go back one. Oh, there you go.
Yeah, just use the roller.
Got it. Thank you very much. All right. So I just want to share really quickly just some community-level data. This is the crime rates for our most serious crimes, the part one crimes. Those are largely crimes against people. They're more serious. And you can see that really this data shows a trending downward of those most serious crimes at both the county and the state level. This is the data for the what's called part two crimes. Those are largely property crimes or less serious crimes unless you're the victim, and then they feel pretty serious. And you can see that there's a little more vacillation in that, in the county-level data. State rates for that are not yet available from the Department of Public Safety. So with that sort of setting of serious crime, property crimes, today we're going to talk about reducing recidivism in both those categories. I'd like to ask our in-person panel members to introduce themselves first, starting with Molly.
Hi, Molly Brunner, Director of Community Corrections.
Good morning. I'm Judge Chris Wilton, here in Scott County.
Sergeant Jamie Pearson, Shakopee Police Department.
All right. Then I'd like to ask the presenters on, who are appearing remotely, to introduce themselves. And I'd like to start with Heidi.
Hi, Heidi Katsma, Coordinator for Veterans and Treatment Court.
And because of our remote environment, Heidi, would you be willing to introduce the rest of the folks or to at least cue them to introduce themselves?
Yeah, I will just kind of cue over to the, to Judge Lennon, and then we can work down from attorneys and go from there.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Judge Gary Lennon. I work on the Treatment Court, Drug Treatment Court with Judge Wilton, and I back him up on Veterans Court.
Talking to yourself.
Cueing it to Bryce.
Morning, Bryce Herman from the County Attorney's Office. I serve in both our Treatment Court and our Veterans Court, and I've been doing so for approximately two years now. I'll turn it over to Alan Anderson from the County Attorney's Office.
Morning, everybody. I am Alan Anderson. I am one of the prosecutors in Veterans Court, and I am Bryce's backup for the Drug Court. I think we'll turn it over to Kevin, now our defense attorney.
Morning, everyone. Thanks for having us. Kevin Weatherill, Defense Attorney in the Veterans Court program. And I think we've got Michelle Barley on here. I'll turn it over to Michelle.
Good morning, everybody. Michelle Barley. I'm with the Public Defender's Office. I am the defense attorney for the Treatment Court, one of them. And I can't see who else is here to introduce.
I got it, Michelle. Thanks. Matt Schultz, please.
Good morning, Matt Schultz. I supervise the clients on the Veterans Court team.
Katie.
Ms. Katie Malaga, and I'm Matt's counterpart for the Treatment Court.
Katie, we are not able to hear you. You might want to check that mic. Dr. Schultz. Jamie McNott. Are you guys hearing me, Michelle? Okay, thank you. Margaret Newman.
Hi, my name is Margaret Newman. I work at the VA, and I serve on the Veteran Treatment Court team.
Thank you. All right, Captain Haas, are you ready? All right. I'd like to start. The first question I'd like to ask, I'd like to direct to Heidi, Heidi Katsma, who is the coordinator for both programs. And I'd like to ask you to do just a brief summary of the evaluation that was done on Treatment Court this year.
Sure. Yes. So we were fortunate to be able to get an evaluation done, and we had some key findings from it. So right now, some of the things that came up from it is they did a comparison group, so they looked at people with similar risk and need to those we serve in Treatment Court. And it was determined that 45% of those people not in Treatment Court obtained new offenses while under supervision compared to 10% that were in Treatment Court. Those that were not in Treatment Court were three times more likely to have warrants issued for noncompliance on supervision than those involved with Treatment Court. And then they found some key factors associated with success in Treatment Court, and those would be those that had a minimum of a diploma or GED upon entry into Treatment Court tended to be more successful. If you were employed at Program Exit, if you were able to rent or own your own residence at Program Exit, and if you spent at least 61 days or more in treatment, you were more likely to be successful in Treatment Court. Some information we also got from the evaluation that's not as tangible, but it's stuff that was reported from participants in the program for feedback on what they thought and felt helped them. There is strong agreement among participants that Treatment Court would help them avoid future drug use and criminal behavior. They reported it helped improve relationships, self-esteem, and overall quality of life. They reported that regular probation appointments helped keep them accountable. And they felt the judge is different than other judges because the judge was more helpful instead of punishing. And they felt strongly that regular court appearances and drug testing helped them stay sober.
Thank you. As a follow-up to that question, I'd like to go to the very last page of the packet. It has some life factors, and some of these are reflected in the variables of success that you just talked about. Could you walk us through this data slide, Heidi?
Sure. So if you look at the left, the before, that's going to be all the graduates. So upon entry, only three graduates were employed when they came into Treatment Court. Upon discharge, 17 of those 21 graduates were fully employed or students. Some, we did have a couple stay-at-home mothers. Housing, upon entry, only 10 of them had stable housing, and upon graduation, all 21 had some form of stable housing with driver's license for 21 graduates. 12 of them had a valid driver's license upon entry, and then at the time of graduation, 20 out of the 21 had a valid driver's license. As you can see, for education, kind of noted what came out in the evaluation, all 21 of our graduates either had a diploma or GED upon entry, and then obviously at exit, they also still had that education level. So if you look at the right column, that's going to be the people that terminated or did not successfully complete the program. Employment, for those people, four at entry did have some form of employment, and at the time of discharge, only three had a form of employment. Housing, six had stable housing at time of entry, and then at time of discharge, only three had stable housing. Driver's license upon entry, for those that didn't successfully complete, 11 had a valid driver's license out of the 23, and no other participants obtained a valid driver's license during that time, so it remained 11. And then education, 17 out of the 23 had either diploma or GED, and then again, the same 17 had discharged, and no new participants at that time got further education.
Thank you, Heidi. Either Heidi or someone from the panel. Can we talk about how the program helps the participants with these factors? So what, what's the involvement of the court process in making a change in these people's lives? How does that, how does this change happen?
I can take that or someone else can. I can start, and then other team members can kind of interject. So throughout the program, it is a requirement for them to work towards education, driver's license, and employment. We have those kind of goals broken down during phases. We help with driver's license. Our attorneys are great at helping navigate the driver's license system for them, helping if they need to get court dates for things. Our county attorney's office has even been willing to work with some offenses to get them dismissed or a fine paid so they can get their driver's license back. We've referred to GED programming through the Workforce Center and community agencies. We have utilized Workforce Center. Law enforcement has even stepped in and helped people with job referrals and things like that. So we use a very team approach, and everyone assists in these areas in ways that can help these people get their driver's license, education, and those sort of things.
Heidi, because the evaluation indicated some other variables that are linked to success in this program, would you envision tracking some of those data elements as well? So I'm thinking about number of days in treatment, few positive UAs, and those kinds of things.
Yes. So we do track treatment time for participants, both residential and outpatient treatment. And we do track, you know, their housing status. We track UAs for all of them. So that's certainly data we can continue or include in presenting in future presentations on overall days and treatment and everything like that as well.
Thank you.
I have a question on housing, if I could.
Yeah.
When you mentioned housing, either for those that were successful or those that were terminated, what, what kind of housing? Is there supportive housing in any kind? I know there's, like, for example, nonprofits that have housing for transitional housing for jail reentry, or, you know, reentry from jail into the community. What kind of housing were you talking about here?
Yes. So stable housing is considered either if they rent or own their own apartment or place, or if they, some of our participants who are younger, who are living stably with a family member long-term.
Do you ever make a... Well, do you ever make a determination that they need more supportive housing with some accountability as part of the housing? Have you ever, is that part of the program or not necessarily?
Yeah, typically, that sort of supportive housing would come from continued treatment. So a lot of our participants will start in a residential program, and then it's determined returning home isn't the best environment for them at that time. So they'll be referred to like an outpatient with lodging that has some accountability and support there. And even after that, some are referred to sober housing, where it's a more supportive environment, and there might be a sober house manager there and other forms of accountability. So it really varies on the participant needs and kind of their step-down process.
Thank you.
As I look at this slide, this is Commissioner Beard, two things jump out at me. One is housing, and the other is driver's license, some things that we pay a lot of attention to in the policy world. Can you tell me, is housing, there are the people that are in Treatment Court that are succeeding, are they succeeding because they have housing? Or do they have housing because they're succeeding? And if I look over on those that washed out, are they, did they fail because they don't have housing, or are they don't have housing because they're failing to clean up their lives? And the same question could go for driver's licenses. The ability to move themselves around probably is directly related to their ability to hold a job. The same kind of question there. Have you, have, do you have any data on that or any observations on what's the cause and what's the effect? That would help us a great deal.
I think it's somewhat twofold. For the people that aren't doing well, sometimes they burn the bridges with housing, either with family. The people that tend not to complete the program are struggling with complying with treatment and getting sober and staying on track. So a lot of the times, their housing is ruined because they've now absconded. They're on warrant status. They're not staying anywhere stable. So it's part twofold, because one, they're using, so you don't know if it's because they're not in a stable house with someone, or if it's just their use. And that would kind of be the same for the graduates. A lot of times, you'll see because they're doing well, family allows them back in the home, they're able to work with an agency to get housing, they're able to secure a job to have the money to pay for housing. So, I mean, if I had to make a guess, it's going to be more on their ability to stay sober and comply with programming and the services they need.
Commissioner, what I'll add is, is that you've hit the nail on the head in terms of two very important pieces here. I can tell you that when they don't have stable housing, they are not going to be successful. And as you've indicated, if they don't have a driver's license, generally speaking, they can't work. I didn't know how hard it was to get your driver's license back. It seemed so easy when you were 16 to go and take your permit, and then magically that day arrives where you have some freedom. But once you lose that license, it's extremely difficult to get it back. And when you put COVID on top of that and the services, et cetera, it's extremely, extremely difficult. I think we always struggle with the housing piece. I tell my participants, as Judge Lennon does, you know, we can put them in the greatest treatment, we can give them the greatest probation officer, and we can send them away and get them fixed to where they need, you know, to be. They have a good head on their shoulders, their brain is clear. And then what we do is we pop them right back in the same exact spot that they were four months ago. And nobody's shocked to find out that they start hanging around the same people. It's not stable housing. People move in and out of there, drugs move in and out, and then we have relapse. And so, you know, a lot of our sober houses, we have people that are in Shakopee, or Shakopee residents, who are in St. Paul, or spread out all over basically the state of Minnesota for treatment and for sober housing. It's definitely one of the pieces that we're missing in Scott County is kind of that stable housing piece. But our probation officers do a great job. They work hard at making sure that these participants get to look for stable housing. Our veterans, of course, are a little bit different because they have the ability at times to get vouchers, but even that's difficult. I have one veteran who yesterday was kicked out of his treatment facility, and he's not homeless. He literally has nowhere to go. And so Matt Schultz has been working since yesterday and the rest of the team to get him some stable housing. Because what I know about him is, if he doesn't have stable housing, he's going to use, and the cycle begins again.
If I could make one comment as well, I think one additional thing that's been really hard for some of our participants with families is finding housing in Scott County for family, family-type apartment, like multi-bedroom apartment dwellings that will allow people with past criminal convictions to be able to rent. That has been a pretty big problem as well.
Well, Judge offline, we should talk about the driver's license thing and how difficult the legislature's made it for people who have screwed up to actually get, get a driver's license back again. But that's probably beyond the scope of this discussion, but I'd be happy to chat about it over coffee when this pandemic dies down.
Perfect. I'll take you up on that, Commissioner.
Judge, I have one more question. And it's not just singles, correct?
If I, if I could chime in just a little bit on the driver's license, Commissioner Beard, I think that's a tremendous barrier for clients, at least from the Veterans Court standpoint, to getting into the program even. We've had participants who their offenses are related to driving, they lose their driver's license, and we require them to, for example, drive to the Marshall Road Transit Station to drug test multiple times a week as part of the program, or they're in violation and they get sanctioned. And, you know, my role, I have to tell them that at the beginning, along with their defense attorney, because if they can't get from point A to point B, they'll fail in the program, and they won't have a chance from the beginning. So I think that's a big one. I agree with Judge Wilton's comments on housing. The Veterans Court clients at least are, tend to be spread out all over the place at times because the housing is such a challenge here locally for them for all the reasons they've stated.
So Judge, I just wanted to ask too about, you know, sometimes we talk about the vets and the single adults or the people in Treatment Court, but we're also dealing with families too that need...
Absolutely. And, and as Kevin just talked about, you know, if you have felony on your record, nobody wants to rent to you. It, our participants get turned down over and over and over. And these are moms with kids, these are dads with kids. It is super, super difficult to find any housing in Scott County. You know, that, that is a challenge. It's a challenge for our vets, it's a challenge for our Drug Court people. And again, I would tell you that if they do not have stable housing, they are not going to succeed. So is it the chicken and the egg? Yes. But, you know, imagine sleeping and staying in your car. And if that's your, if that's your home, the rest is you worry about where you're going to park at night, whether you're going to be safe, whether your stuff's going to be stolen, as opposed to all of us who presumably go home and lock our door, and we have a solid foundation to start with. It's, it's a problem, and it, it's a barrier to success for sure.
Do we have...
Sorry. Do we have data on, just in, and maybe even not data, but, but just your impressions on, in general, how many of the participants of these courts have minor children?
Heidi, do you know off the top of your head? I, I mean, I can think about mine. I know...
Well, whether they have current custody or not, I would say anywhere from 40 to 50% of our participants have children.
Great, thank you.
In that, small children. I mean, it, small children. And a number of our Drug Court participants have, actually had babies while they were participating and continue to participate in, in Treatment Court.
Yep. We've had five healthy sober babies born from participants, and then we've had some male participants whose significant others have had babies as well. So we probably have about seven or eight total, but five of our actual participants gave birth to sober babies.
And that's created some different partnerships. Yes. At the beginning of Treatment Court, back years ago, we had worked hard at a link between Children's Services and Treatment Court. And I know that there's some new partnerships that exist now. Can someone talk about that?
Yeah, it's, you know, it's a, it's an interesting thing when you start from ground zero in a Treatment Court or Veterans Court. Your, your focus is scattered. You kind of have to go through, make mistakes, as we've had, to get better at what we do. And so we've had a good relationship with Lisa Brodsky and Public Health in the past, and kind of on a smaller scale. And Judge Lennon and I have had a chance to talk to Lisa and are super excited about kind of a new partnership where we have somebody from Scott County Public Health who's now going to come and sit, right now virtually, in our Treatment Court. And so Angie was on yesterday and introduced herself to all of my Treatment Court people. The wraparound services, again, you know, we have all these new moms, and dads for that matter, who need that public health piece. This is, this is one of those, as Heidi talked about, having five sober babies. I don't know how to show you statistically what that's going to save the county this year, next year, or in the, in the following years. But to have sober babies that are not in child protection and are healthy medically, et cetera, it's just exponential. Not only is it great for the human being to give this young child a chance at ground zero, but cost savings is immense. And so Angie from Public Health has now spent two weeks in court, virtually, and she is working with a number of our participants, including one of our young pregnant moms. And our goal now is, is to get the dads involved. We have young dads who are not living with these children, and yet when they get little Johnny for Saturday, and he cries or she cries, they don't know what to do. They've never been trained to be a dad, and they've missed out on so many portions of that, you know, that learning experience. And so it's, you know, we took a look at within. This doesn't cost us any money. It costs us time and energy and effort, but to have Public Health now more involved with our participants right away in Drug Court is, I'm excited about it, and I know Judge Lennon is, and Lisa Brodsky is also.
Want to move to page 12.
So this chart and numbers below talk about the different racial breakdown of the participants of the program. And we do this to identify if there's any disparities. Looking at the raw numbers, it looks like there are disparities. So can someone talk about what's the story behind that data? Now, why, why do we see the numbers in this format? And what are some of the challenges or opportunities behind that?
So I can speak to that. So this would be from, you know, our percentages for all the people referred and kind of how it breaks down. Just to give you some comparison, how it compares to Scott County probation for those assigned to probation officers would be a similar risk and need level to what we have. Currently, our Scott County overall population is 81% white, 5% Hispanic, 4% African-American, 6% Asian, 1% Native American, and 3% multiracial. So we're somewhat aligning with our Scott County probation demographic, but there is definitely a disparity in who we are serving in our program. I have volunteered to be on a state work group to identify equity, race, and inclusion in treatment courts. So we're currently utilizing a tool so we can pull all of our information from our treatment court program, put it into the system and kind of see where we're falling short. So that's a work group and something we're going to be focusing on to make sure that we are more inclusive in our program.
If I could say one thing, I really feel that one of the reasons that we don't have inclusion equal across the board is because of past criminal history. And I've pointed that out a couple of times and I know that Mr. Irman and I have had this discussion before. But I do believe that it's the eligibility criteria that also lends to the discrimination.
I can add to that in terms of some of the things we've done to try to change or address that is, prior to when we were under our federal grant funding, we were very limited in terms of the types of offenses we could actually take into treatment court. After our grant funding ran out, we looked to kind of address this issue head on and modify some of the criteria as to who is coming in based on offense history. We're really, at this point, narrowing down pretty significantly to offenders that, you know, if they have issues of murder, manslaughter, sex trafficking, arson, some very serious crimes, they're going to be deemed ineligible for our program because we've got some pretty significant public safety concerns. What was previously limiting a lot of folks was prior felony offenses related to assaults. And we've limited that now to if there's an assault within the past five years. And I'll just say, it's something we're continuing to evaluate from the county attorney's office. Our perspective is it's a delicate balance in who we accept into the program from the public safety perspective in the first place. Some of our referrals are presumptive prison commits. And as a result of that, we need to think really hard about what impact that has to public safety if we're having these individuals enter the program. Another thing that we've switched in the past year is really work to get to know who these individuals are before they enter our program. One really great thing Heidi has done has actually developed in terms of a referral sheet. Before, we used to get essentially a name and an offense. Doesn't tell us a lot about that person, right, and who they are. But now Heidi's developing a narrative when she interviews these individuals as to why they want to be in the program. Because what we're looking for is what is something substantial or compelling that otherwise is going to overcome what the law says normally, which is that this person is a presumptive prison commit. We're having some real honest and challenging discussions about who's the best fit for this program based on looking at some of this data and what's right for our citizens.
Thanks, Bryce. Molly, you were going to make a comment.
Yeah, no, thank you, Bryce. I think that you covered some of the things I was going to mention. I was just also going to say that, Heidi, you spoke to kind of the statewide trends. This is also national trends, so it's not unique to Scott County. And so we'll be looking at all of that data as it pertains to continuing to examine again what we're doing here in Scott County. So, in addition to all the things that have been mentioned, so.
So, quick question, and I know this is always touchy, which is why we should take it head on. So the context of this is, like, we should always go into everything with our eyes wide open with whatever it is. But a couple, I was walking across the room, so maybe I missed it. But are we saying that in our heart of hearts, we believe it's more circumstantial that some of these things are the way they're panning out versus like full-on discriminative? And maybe we don't need to, I just.
I think, can I, can I answer that?
Sure.
Do you mind, Commissioner? I think what we're saying is that people are having different experiences in our treatment court and we need to learn more about that. And the speaker's talked about it may be past criminal history. I don't think anybody is speaking to some prejudice, some active prejudice. But there are factors in our criminal justice system that may be impacting that and we need to learn more. If people are having different experiences, we want to know about that.
Absolutely. That seems completely reasonable. And like, again, we need to always have our eyes wide open to everything.
Yep.
But I also, you know, sometimes, I'm not saying that this is one of those times, but you can get caught into a narrative that it's like, well, wait a minute. Like, what's real and what's not real?
Yep.
Like, let's, can we be honest about that? And if there's things that need to change, let's change them. Like, of course.
Right.
I just want to be, and I'm not saying that this is that time, but it's, I don't want to get stuck into some weird narrative that is the trend of the day and it's like, it's always right to do right. It's always right to do right.
Always right to be right. I think we are fortunate that we have leadership. I think both Molly and Heidi have inserted themselves in statewide groups to help us learn more and to help us figure out if there are things we need to change up. What are those things that will be most successful? So I think we're appreciative of that.
And Commissioner, I know that we, we take the race piece and the equality piece very seriously. And I will tell you that even within the last six months, we have become significantly more diverse in our clientele than we were the last three and a half years. And partly that's due to what Bryce has talked about and with Heidi's work. You know, you see a name, John Doe, and you see an offense, and it's easy regardless, and most of the time, we don't even know the race of the person, to say that they won't fit the program. But it's amazing, once you actually delve into who they are, where they've come from, what they've endured, kind of their high-risk, high-need, et cetera. I think that, you know, Bryce, on behalf of the law enforcement, has done a really nice job also being more versatile. And, you know, maybe three years ago, when the county attorney's office would simply just say, no. Now there are at least discussions as to what if? And could we move in this direction and are they right for the program? And so, like anything, we have really grown as a program in those regards too, whether it's Veterans Court or Treatment Court. And our intent is, is to get more diverse.
Well, and I would just add, it's always hard to really know somebody without knowing their story.
Yep.
And every one of us in this room has a story, everyone out there has a story. But I also know it's incredibly messy and time-consuming. Because I don't, I know I don't tell anybody. Just seen you yesterday. Hey, how are you doing? How are you doing? How are you doing? I mean, it's, it's time-consuming, but until you get to that point, it's just cookie cutters and humans aren't cookie cutters.
Exactly.
But systems operate sort of, tend to as cookie cutters. And so that was just my point. I just, like, hey, it is always right to do right. You never hear anything different. But I'm also, like, let's not, I don't want, let somebody else fall into those political narratives. Like, let's do the right thing. And I know that we are. So I just wanted to.
That's a good transition. Doing the right thing is a good transition into a conversation about law enforcement. And Sergeant Pearson is here this morning. We're grateful for that. I'd like to go to slide. Thank you. Thank you, Scott. And so Heidi, could you walk through the data and then we have some questions for the sergeant?
So this data is on law enforcement checks that were done on all accepted participants. And then it's broken down kind of between police departments, the number of checks each department has done. And then it's also broken down by our current active participants, our graduates and our terminated participants for numbers that they had for curfew checks. And I can let Sergeant Pearson talk a little bit more. When we say curfew checks, it's much more than that. We're very fortunate to have the partnerships we do and that's a huge part to the work that Sergeant Pearson has done in building relationships with these other departments. So yes, the term is curfew check, but a lot of these officers come and they really engage with the participants, check in on them, how they're doing, what do they need, I'm always here if you need anything. I know Shakopee has been great at, you know, even giving rides to UAs or appointments, job referrals, things like that. So I'll let Sergeant Pearson talk a little bit more about the law enforcement relationship. But, I mean, as you can see, we've had over 2,000 checks done with our law enforcement partners on participants in our program. And it's been a huge piece to the success, I believe.
Yes. So the biggest thing is the, building the relationships with the participants, obviously. You're knocking on their door at 2:00 in the morning, they're sleeping, they're irritated that we woke them up because they work at 6:00 the next morning. But the judges, judges both have done a very nice job in sending the message that you will answer your door, you'll be respectful, and you will have that conversation. So I think it goes back to just all the teamwork and all that. It's an opportunity for us to, like Heidi said, really get to know these people. The participants, some of them are more engaging than others. Some of them latch on to the idea quicker, some of them never do. There's some participants that may never, you know, really engage in that relationship beyond graduation. I could sit here and tell you stories about relationships I have with the participants who have graduated and I still keep in touch with them, have coffee with them, call them once a month, whatever it is. Every officer that's doing these has a different take on it. There's a huge buy-in piece. You have some officers that are going to knock on the door, yep, you're here, okay, have a good night. And that's going to be the extent of it. Then there's going to be others who really go the extra mile and, you know, build a relationship and do things like offer rides to UAs if they don't have that driver's license or things like that. So I think it's pretty, it's pretty up to the officer how far they want that relationship to go. I came off patrol about a year ago, I'm in investigations now. And I'm certain that's why Shakopee doesn't have the most curfew checks. But that's the one thing I miss most is doing those checks at, you know, midnight, 2:00 in the morning. I don't know if anyone has specific questions about, you know, what else that entails. That's just kind of a general overview of what that looks like.
So Jamie here, Sergeant Pearson. Can you talk about what's the variation in the checks that are done by different officers? And do we have enough data to develop any kind of a correlation between how many checks or the type of checks that are done and graduation or other elements that are improved within the program?
You know, when you look at this, this data in front of you, you'll see, and my eyes aren't great, I don't have that in front of me, but I'll just say, Bell Plain, for example, they do a wonderful job of consistently checking on their folks. I think one thing that we could do better as a group is just really under, getting the other agencies to understand the phases of our program. Someone who's in phase five, about ready to graduate, does not need to be checked on four times a week. Our goal is to put them back into the community and not need to rely on a cop knocking on their door four times a week to make sure they're there and doing what they're supposed to be doing. Obviously, we're grateful for the checks that are done and there's a huge accountability piece to that. But I think if we, if we, as every agency together, would understand, I think the phases a little bit better, I think that would be helpful. I don't know if I really answered your question, but.
Well, and to Sergeant Pearson's point too, prior to COVID, we were going out and trying to get into the chief meetings to talk to police departments about our program and kind of the curfew check aspect. We were able to make it out to Savage for a chief meeting, but then obviously life circumstances happened and we're not going out and about right now. As far as data for success versus not, I mean, as you can see, the graduates do have a higher percentage of law enforcement checks. But that's also due to the fact that our graduates are home, doing well. A lot of the terminated people are on warrant status and not able to be checked on. We could probably dig a little deeper into the type of checks because we do, you know, the officers do a great job of documenting a conversation that they had or what the interaction was like. So we could definitely look at pulling out more data on meaningful conversations versus checks and kind of see where that lands. So that could be something we could definitely look at for future.
I mean, that's something to note too. I mean, when you're, when we're going out there and visiting with these people, a lot of times, you know, in the beginning, it's a curfew check. So you're going there to make sure they're there, you know, documenting your observations on their level of sobriety. But as you get to know these people, it becomes more than just a curfew check. I can only speak for myself, but there's participants where, yeah, it's a curfew check, but I'm also going there because I enjoy visiting with them, I want to see what they're up to. So, I mean, it kind of, it turns into more than just a curfew check if, if that relationship is, you know, established at some point.
Well, this piece is one of the things that makes our treatment court different. So many treatment courts don't have law enforcement buy-in. They don't have curfew checks. They don't, they just don't have it. Their police officers don't believe in it or their relationship is not as strong, et cetera. This is one of the pieces that makes us successful, period. When you have police officers that go and sit on a couch and have a 15-minute chat with somebody and then they get up and leave, I mean, I can't tell you how many participants have looked at Judge Lennon and I and they will say, literally, they'll look at me and say, and then the police officer just walked out. I didn't get arrested, they didn't search my house, they, they just walked out. And, you know, and a number of you have come to graduations in the past and you've seen actual police officers hug participants. I mean, when we started this program, that is something that never crossed my brain, that we would have a participant hug a police officer at the end and thank them. You know, it's, when the participants usually come in, they don't like the lawyers, they don't like the judges, they don't like the courthouse, they surely don't like the police officers. And yet, our graduates come in and graduate and look around and are so thankful. And the biggest piece, or one of the biggest pieces, is with the police officers. And so that's been, you know, this is kind of the cornerstone or one of the cornerstones of our program that makes us different. And a lot of that success is from Sergeant Pearson and breaking down those barriers because there are a lot of cops that will look and say, you know, this program's garbage, you're just letting the bad guys out. And they don't see the value in changing human beings, especially our 19-year-olds and our 22-year-olds. But Sergeant Pearson has done tireless work and has, have a couple of our deputies in the sheriff's department who believe in it. And it's made all the difference in the world.
Question. Sergeant Pearson, thanks for being here and thanks for all you've done. We've seen your work. One thing I would add from, you know, I'll speak for myself, but I'll kind of speak for my colleagues too. When there's opportunities for a need to politically educate and change minds, whether it be with some of the city councils or mayors, you know, who do have some influence, sometimes with the chief in those towns, let us know because obviously we're believers in this program. And we're sitting here, we can't do the work, you guys are doing all the great work, you know. It's kind of embarrassing to sit here and hear, hear how, how good you guys, you know. It's like, you're important to us, like, wow, you're doing all that work. But calling us for help when, when you need us, when we can be helpful. And then second, my question for you, just because I think it'd be great for all of us to hear and especially our, our viewers and I, I know you'll, you'll have something to say about this. How has your participation in this, in these programs made you a better officer?
Good question. So I won't sit here and tell you my life story, but I have always kind of needed something to grab onto and have a passion for alongside of my day-to-day duties of being a cop. So, you know, I was a damn officer for a while, that was kind of my, my passion at that time in my career. This opportunity came along and I think coming into this, I remember. I remember, um, the prior, former prior-like chief came and talked to our sergeant group and kind of told us that this program or opportunity was coming to Scott County, and, um, kind of laid it all out in front of us, and my first, my first response was the same response that I get from most of my partners and other officers, was this is never gonna work, this is a slap on the rest for these people, there's no way. And then he kind of started giving his presentation, and I was like, thinking to myself, well, maybe this could work. Um, I don't know if it was just the way he presented it or what. And then, um, I don't remember exactly if I came to court and saw it, or, and I'm not entirely sure, I don't remember exactly what it was, but, um, I had heard that he was gonna be stepping away, and so I reached out to him and just kind of said, hey, I, I, I would like this opportunity if my chief agrees to it, and we can work it all out. Um, these people have problems, just like the rest of us, everybody has problems, nobody's perfect. Um, and I think that's been the biggest eye-opening piece for me, and it translates to other areas of my job, obviously, is just because they have a drug problem doesn't mean they're a bad person. Um, they maybe committed that burglary, or that shoplifting, or theft, or whatever it is, to support that drug habit. You, you get rid of that drug habit, and maybe they won't steal anymore, maybe they won't burglarize their parents' house, you know? Um, so I think that's the biggest thing for me is just really recognizing that these really are good people once you get to know them, and you get them the services that they need, and they gotta want it, though. I mean, you can't force it on them, they gotta want it, and it, it works, we've all seen it. Single-handedly, it works, if they want it, it'll work.
So I'm gonna dovetail on that, because what you just said is they have to want it. So wh- whether it's this, or Child Protective Services, or whatever, I always think about, okay, you guys are the front lines of this thing, and we've all been in situations where we want something so badly for somebody else, but they don't, and there's nothing you can do about it. How does that impact all of you? Um, cause that's the other side of this, like, it's messy, right? We're getting into the stuff of life, and you can see the light at the end of the tunnel, but they can't. Um, getting goosebumps thinking about it, cause we've all known those people where, whatever it is, you want, but until they want it, until the timing, whatever you wanna call it, um, how does that impact you, um, moving forward?
I think I can take this one. Uh, this is Judge Lennon, um, it's like parenting.
Oh, oh.
So much like parenting, I can't even tell you, I have more children now than I ever have, and sometimes they disappoint me, and I remind myself what I still like about them. And it is shocking how attached.
Oh.
That sounds unprofessional, but it's that, how much I care about these ki- and I call them kids, they're adults, but I call them kids, and because I see both of those sides. And you can want and want and want change for someone, and you can encourage them as much as you can, and at some point, they're still gonna make another mistake. But I, I had a mother come to me, or she might have been the grandma, came to me at a graduation, and she said, "You know, you sent Jordan to prison four years ago." And I was just shocked, I didn't remember it at all. And, and she said, "But you know what? That's what he needed at that time, and then when he came out, he was ready to do this program, and you kind of, you said something to him at the time about he needed to, to really sit down and reflect what he was doing, and that, and that that, that kind of tough love portion of the process still worked. He wasn't an immediate success, but ultimately, he succeeded." So you, you have to, you have to look at the, the long game, you know? It, it's hard, but it is, it is definitely, and I think they feel that connection when they say, "The judge really cares about what happens to me, and all the research says that's important." And so that's what we do, but I'll tell you what, I am never more tired than on Monday night. Exhausting.
Well, and the other piece to that is, is that, you know, we screen people to come in, but we also kick people out.
Sure.
We don't, it's not, you get in and you can just have at it. Um, at some point, we're very cognizant of the fact that these are valuable resources, and we work so hard, and you're exactly right. I can't tell you how much, how many times I would look at Judge Lennon and say, "I just want them to get this right." How many times can we do X, Y, and Z? You know, and yet, sometimes it takes two treatments, other people have taken seventeen treatments to get them to where they wanna be. And we figure out kind of as we go whether this is the right time. And, and for some of it's not, and for some of them, we terminate them, we send them, and we hope that when they're older, more mature, ready, whatever it is in their life. Um, but I'll tell you, we all look in the mirror and say, did we do everything we possibly could? Have we done every service? Have we, is there anything we haven't shaken loose? And if the answer is, we've done it all, and they've been in program for eighteen, twenty, twenty-five months, et cetera, and they haven't made progress, then it's time.
Well, and Judge Lennon, I wanted to say one thing, you, you mentioned it sounds unprofessional. Um, I thought it sounded very human, very awesome, and I know, and I know that's what, I know that's what you meant, but, I mean, that's the human, right? We all want the best for, for everybody. Um, so that was my dovetail, cause Commissioner Wexman-Brecky kind of brought that up. I was gonna start kind of in the beginning part of it is, like, I, cause I, Judge Walton, I've been in your courtroom.
Yes.
Zoomed in or whatever, and, uh, you know, you come down off the ivory tower, I know you don't see it that way, but man, I fucker up when I walk into a courtroom for the Christmas, uh, get-together, you know, there's something about like, oh, am I sitting up straight? Am I, um, so there's something about that courtroom, which you, you really, you know, bring that down to, to level. Um, but when somebody else, especially in a robe, or somebody in some position, attorneys, say, "You know what? I see something in you." When you don't see, I mean, I'm getting goosebumps thinking about it, I mean, there's power there. And then I've got the, the 5-0 knocking on my door.
Yep.
And they're not hollering me out. And some I know are, are, you know, see it better than others, or whatever, but wanna spend the time, and hey, let's go do this, you need a ride, whatever, like.
Well, and on top of that, right, and on top of that, your probation officer actually knows your name, they know your kids, they know your story, they converse with you a couple of times a day, I mean, it is, you know, it's that wraparound deal.
Oh.
And, and it is, and that is why we succeed. Because if we just sent them treatment and then plopped them right back in the same spot and said, "Hope it works," it doesn't work.
What always makes me nervous is the then what. Okay, you're on, what did you say, I don't, what was, something five, or phase five, or whatever, you're kind of on, like, you know, the fish is kind of out of the net.
Yep.
Like, it's gonna take, where's it going? You know, which I think to some extent was John's question, or what's the next step? Like, we've, we've seen people that have been, you know, we've, we've come in, you're in the embrace, you know, we're here for you, man, we're gonna do what we can, but ultimately, it's your choice. But now, it's time to spread your wings, and now where are they going to? That's the other thing that keeps me up at night.
Well, like Judge Lennon said, though, they're like kids, right? When you send your kid to college at eighteen, that they then have complete freedom. You hope you raised them right.
Yeah.
But the thing we do in treatment court also is, we graduate them, but then we have them continue to come back and see us over a period of months, just check-ins.
Yeah.
And so, kind of like the col- your college kid that comes back and, you know, in October, they come back, or December, and you're like, okay, let's see your grades, how you doing? Do you look good, do you sound good? Um, and if there's potential for relapse, et cetera, we bring them right back in to get them to where they need to be.
Well, I just hope you guys are taking care of your own hearts in all of this, is a big part of it, cause yes, there's boundaries, we all have to set them. Um, and ultimately, it's their choice, it's just, you know, when you see somebody, just please make sure you're taking care of yourself in this too.
Thank you.
Let's look at how those folks are doing after they leave. So the slide in front of you looks at the reci- I, you were just, you were just like teeing them up, you know, it's good. Um, so, um, the slide in front of you has the recidivism data for people, um, in treatment court. Um, this is treatment court only, this is, does not include any data from Vets Court, obviously, since that's a new program. Um, Heidi, can you just walk through this data, and then I have a couple of questions?
Sure, um, so the graphs on the left, um, for graduates and terminations, those, that reflects the number of participants that obtained an offense while they were active under drug court supervision. So out of graduates, we had two graduates obtain some sort of new offense, um, while active in the program. And then out of the twenty-three that were terminated, twelve of those participants obtained at least one new offense while in the program. And then on the right-hand side, it's the reflection after one year. So, um, just due to our time, um, the average length it takes a participant to graduate is, you know, around twenty-two months. So we really didn't have any graduates until year two of the program. So right now, um, we have about five that have been fully out for one year, but about all the twenty-one graduates, only one person right now has obtained an offense, and it was a gross misdemeanor, drug possession offense, and he actually came into our relapse track. Um, so that is one new thing we also developed since last presenting, is we now incorporated a relapse track. So because we monitor the graduates for six months, um, after graduation, if they were to, you know, report use, have a positive UA, um, struggling in some sort, picked up a new offense, we have the option, um, to put them into a relapse track, which is basically a modified version of treatment court. It's kind of an additional six-month period where we have them come back in for check-ins, meet more frequently with probation again, kind of do the, everything they were doing in treatment court, um, to hopefully quickly get them back on track, um, where they wouldn't need a full-length program again. Um, and then out of the twenty-three terminated participants, seven of them have attained at least one offense, um, since being terminated from the program. So as you can see, um, I mean, our graduates are doing very well so far, um, with only one obtaining an offense since graduation.
Thanks, Heidi. So, um, I, you know, I, I really celebrate your success, and I, I think that you should feel terrific about this work. I do think it begs the question, because this is a, this is a big investment, a big financial investment for the county, and it's a small number of people that have been served so far, and more will come, but I, I'd like people to talk about, like, what's your best evidence that this is where our resources should go going forward?
I'll start with that one. Interesting that COVID hit in March, um, and so you could never conduct a science experiment with human beings like this. So in February, all the things you just heard about were in place. We drug test people two to five times a week, we curfew check them, they come to court, they meet with their probation officer, their probation officer goes out to their house, they're in real-person treatment, um, face-to-face, they're doing all the things that we want them to do. And across the board, both of our treatment courts were doing extremely well. Um, winter is always tough for our addicts, and so coming out of winter into spring, things looked really good. Then COVID hits, and we tell them, "You now need to isolate." Our drug testing, shut down. Our police officers couldn't go in the house anymore. We held virtual court. Um, probation officers couldn't go to their house anymore. Their meetings and et cetera were all virtual. Over ninety percent of my people in four months relapsed, almost ninety, or over ninety percent. When you take away what we have put in place, this is what happens. And so I could never come to you and tell you, boy, your money is being well-spent, look at all the successes. It's hard, once you put everything in place, you would never have a control group that you would just yank away and say, "Now let's see how these people are gonna do, because we're dealing with human beings." Interestingly enough, once the courts opened back up again, drug testing got put back in place, meetings, probation officers, everything else, my people went from this to all the way up. We had in March our first overdose death of one of my participants. He appeared virtually on a Monday afternoon, I watched him and looked at him and talked to him at three o'clock in the afternoon. By the next day, the next night, he was dead, his name is Andrew Maxa, and he overdosed. And we thought he was sober the whole time, he had done so well, great young man, had turned his life around, and when you take everything away, this is what we revert, we revert back to. When we started Treatment Court four or five years ago, and we talked to you guys, and we talked to other people, um, we had all of our drug people continue to fill up our jail, over and over and over. It was just this revolving door of jail bed, jail bed, jail bed. I look at the high-risk, high-need people that we deal with, and, and Chris, you're right. Relatively speaking, this is a small number, but it's like anything else. When I was a prosecutor in Ramsey County, we talked about the people that were filling up, um, the, uh, emergency area of overdose, et cetera. Um, and it was like nine people that were there seventy percent of the time. If you just took those nine people out, the numbers would be real nice and low. And that's what I would tell you about our drug court participants. Because of the services we've put in place, these high-risk, high-need people are staying out of jail. They're getting the mental health, Dr. Schultz screens every single one of them, and that's the other gigantic piece that, that frankly, you guys have given us, which is a psychologist for mental health that sits on our team. It is invaluable to hear once she does a diagnostic assessment to what this person's needs are. And so we deal with their mental health. Without this program, I guarantee you that our jails would be full, and we would be running, again, cycling through, the families would be cycling through, uh, the amount of money spent to deal with all these human beings would be gigantic. Um, and so, yes, it's a small number of people, but as Commissioner Bear, you've pointed out over and over, and, and you and I see exactly the same on this, these are human beings. And so if there are only twenty human beings that we take, and we make them law-abiding citizens, sober, make their families get back intact, that they get a job, they pay taxes, and they don't burden the system, and in fact, they enhance our system, what's the value? And to me, you can put a monetary value on it, but really, it's priceless. Because now for generations, we, you, have done something to alter the course of history in, in each human being.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, the, in March, they just went downhill because there was, it was no structure for these, right?
That's exactly right, we took away all the precautions.
So, is, do you think a lot of this starts just, they had no structure their entire lives, possibly, that caused all this?
Commissioner, I think that what, what, what happens is, is you get this cycle where, um, your life, as, as all my drug court participants would describe their lives, it's chaos. It's, where am I gonna find my drugs? What am I gonna steal? Where am I gonna couch surf? Am I gonna sleep? I mean, we've had participants talk about them going into bathrooms at gas stations and sleeping overnight in the bathroom, or sleeping overnight next to a building curled up, because they have nowhere else to go. And so their lives are unstructured. They wake up, they look for drugs, they steal, they do whatever they have to, then they go to sleep, then they wake up, and they look for more drugs. And so I think once COVID hit, it was chaos, and, and we told them to isolate. Don't hang around, people, stay by yourself. And any addict will tell you, the worst thing they can do is A, be bored, B, be isolated. And I asked a lot of these participants, "How do you know you're gonna move to relapse?" I start isolating, I don't talk to my family anymore, I don't talk to my friends, I stay in my house, I, I just withdraw. And so we almost forced them, based on the pandemic, to do and put themselves right back in that spot. And the statistics were, I just, I, I literally, between March, April, and May, I kept looking at my sheets every week, thinking, "You've got to be kidding me, like, every single person is going down the hill." And then, once the lights get turned back on, and we start moving back and get drug testing again, everything else, the numbers, they just come right back up.
I, Judge Walton, I think also a very important piece of this is, um, trauma. And it hasn't really been discussed, but it, it kind of went into a few of the conversations that we've been having, but a lot of our participants have a lot of trauma in their past. And, you know, COVID also took away their mental health services. So I think that that was also a big piece. Um, when you have a lot of trauma like that, and you have given up hope on yourself, and then we bring you in, try to give you hope back for yourself, put in place a lot of services, and then take those services away, you take away their hope again.
Thanks, Michelle.
Well, I would, I just would add, that this is true for all of the folks on probation, we saw high relapse rates, right? I mean, that's I mean, that's just the, the essence of the pandemic. And so, um, so you're absolutely right. I just echo and support what people are saying around that. I think it's, um, it's definitely a struggle when you, when you have all those supports and then you take that away from anyone. Yep.
All right. Um, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hand it back to you for any other questions from the board. Thank you very much.
Boy, I felt like we were just getting started.
I know, I, I, isn't it good? It is. It's really interesting.
I know we're late on time, but I, I think I want to bring this up because I would like a reminder for us and then to allow you to have some input and discussion. Um, you know, I, I really liked in the, the materials how you talked about changes since the grant going off and being county-funded. You know, from, from our seats, we like it that it was grant-funded, but it's nice to see that we can do even better when, when we're controlling the, the funding. Um, and I, I think there's been some discussion about, and, and maybe even sometimes some, some tension about, does the person who's being served have to reside in Scott County? What does it mean? Do they reside in Scott County? Where's that at for both Treatment Court and Veterans Court? Any thoughts you want to talk to us about that, that issue?
And, and that's a good question. And, and we have stayed true to kind of what we promised four years ago, which was if you gave us the money, um, we would serve Scott County residents. And all of you know, and are very well aware that a lot of our traffic comes from Mystic Lake. They're Hennepin County, they're all over the place. Um, and, and so we have not had any problems filling our drug courts with Scott County residents. And we've got a great policy on homelessness. We make them meet three of the criteria to have some connection to, to Scott County. I think the veteran piece, um, is a little bit different. And, um, you know, if you're a Hennepin County resident, Hennepin County generally has a Treatment Court. And so does Ramsey, and so does Dakota, and so does all these other places. But the veterans' courts are fewer and far between. Um, and so we are still in that stage of trying to figure out how we can serve the most veterans possible, um, that, that come into Scott County. And it's made a little bit difficult, because we have a probation officer that's here. And so if somebody from Morehead gets arrested and they're a veteran, would I love to have them in our Veterans Court? Yes. But logistically, that's an impossibility. Um, and so I think with our veterans, we're trying to, trying to be a little bit wider and a little, give a little more leeway to people that are at least on the fringes of Scott County, um, if they've committed a crime here, to be able to bring them in.
I think one of the challenges we have on the probation side is there's statewide policy that, that also speaks to when and how quickly we need to transfer probation back into the county in which they reside. So we have some competing things going on there as well that we are working through and talking through as we staff cases. Yeah.
And I'd just like to chime in here on this. From a Veterans Court perspective, that's probably been the most interesting part I've learned in the last eleven months, and perhaps most frustrating. And I don't think it's anybody on this meeting's fault. But we do have situations where we have clients, potential participants, who are just over the border into Dakota County, uh, Lusur County, and are right for the program, and we can do good for them. Um, but we have those barriers, as indicated. And, um, I don't know if that's a legislative change. I agree probation's working through that. But that's certainly something that, um, I think as a whole, and something that we need to try to find a way to address.
And, uh, just one final thing on that. One unique issue that I think we run into in the Vets Court program is obviously we're trying to help these people find housing. And we've had multiple people come through our program who were not housed when they began the program, and then obtained housing in a different county. Um, and all the problems that probation has set about being able to supervise them come up in that situation too. Uh, and so it's difficult how we, from our end, we decide whether we accept these people because they're originally homeless or because they were living in Scott County. But then they do obtain stable housing in another county. That's what we're asking them to do, but then it's difficult for us to supervise them or impossible at that point. Uh, so simply the lack of available housing for these people on HUD-Vash vouchers, which they get through the VA, uh, in Scott County is a real problem and causes us to lose a lot of participants.
So I have a question. This is John Ulrich, Commissioner. Um, what would it mean if, and I'd probably get in trouble with some for asking this question. What would it mean if, uh, to you, if you, if there was one or two houses uh, on Marshallville Road walkable to the transit station that were maybe supportive housing? Would, would you be able to make good use of those houses? Or, or how, how important would that be as a tool in your, um, in your work?
Commissioner, we would fill it if you built it.
And I'd retire and manage it.
There's no doubt that it would be full, Commissioner, with Treatment Courts and beyond that as well, with reentry.
Okay, thank you.
For the record, he's not getting in trouble for asking that question. Anything else online or in studio, so to speak? Otherwise, I would just say, look, I, I mean, I don't know everybody on digital, you know, or everyone here, but probably not looking for a job, right? You're, you're feeling, you're not raising your hand to do some of this dirty work, because, you know, so I see this oftentimes as a calling. So you've kind of been wired and built for this. But as you pour yourself out into and onto the lives of others, I would just hope and pray that you are also being filled and poured into somehow, some way. Um, because it's impossible, in my opinion, to pour, 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 and give, give, give. And I'm all about tough love, um, without getting that cup refilled somehow, some way. So I just hope that that is happening.
So I, I also wanted to thank Sergeant Pearson and Judge Wilton and, and all of you for coming today. Um, I did sit in those original work sessions five or six years ago when they came. And I still have embedded in my head the three legs of the stool, right? The addiction, the, um, mental health treatment. And I know we didn't hear much from the doctor today, but we have in the past. And then the, um, the, uh, police, the, and being involved, or those, those checks, and how important they were sitting in your first graduation and, and talking about the impact that had. And I, I'm just really thrilled that when I look at this, that I still see that's intact. And, you know, Commissioner Beer talked earlier about it takes time to meet people and learn stories, but that was the other thing that was talked about, that the judge, the attorney, the law enforcement officer would be assigned and be consistent, and they would take the time to learn those stories. And clearly, with that intact, with those other addiction and mental health treatments intact, it seems to be successful in your transitioning the lives of these people. And so it is encouraging to see that five or six years later, what you brought forward. And if we could stick to this formula of best practices, um, that you would make progress. So thank you both and all of you for being here today. Um, it's just great news.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And, um, we have historically invited the Treatment Court to come annually to the, to the Scott Delivers Program. So we expect to do that next year unless we hear differently from you. A, a big thank you to the people that are remote. This is a really tough way to have this conversation, and they're a pretty tight team. So it's hard to have half of them, um, somewhere else. But thanks to all of you.
Now, I just wanted to note that they look pretty comfortable. I can see their faces. Um, I'm, I'm starting to think that that looks super attractive.
That they may be the smart ones.
Well, yeah. I mean, so that, that, Les is looking at me. Yeah, you read that from me.
That's, that's the work session discussion, so.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
About, what do we got? Fifteen items? Um, starting with item six point one. To adopt Resolution Number 2020-191, authorizing entering into a cooperative agreement with the Cedar Lake Area Water and Sanitary Sewer District. Six point two, adopt Resolution Number 2020-192, authorizing an amendment to an agreement with Bolton &amp; Mink, Inc. for design consultant services for the County Highway Two and County Highway Fifteen Roundabout in Helena Township. Six point three, adopt Resolution Number 2020-193, approving execution of a purchase agreement in the purchase of real property located along County Highway Forty-two in the city of Prior Lake by an early voluntary acquisition by mutual agreement. Six point four, adopt Resolution Number 2020-194, authorizing the Jail Electronic Security System Upgrades Project Contract be awarded to Stanley Convergent Security Solutions, Inc. Six point five, adopt Resolution Number 2020-197, approving Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Securities Act, or CARES Act Special Revenue Fund, to be authorized for use to cover pandemic response costs incurred in the county operation budget from no earlier than March first, 2020, through October thirty-first, 2020. Six point six, adopt Resolution Number 2020-198, approving Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, CARES Act Special Revenue Fund, to be authorized for use to cover pandemic response costs incurred in the county operation budget from no earlier than March first, 2020, through December first, 2020. Six point seven, adopt Resolution Number 2020-199, authorizing entering into an agreement with Access Networks, Inc. to expand broadband in additional underserved and unserved areas of Scott County. Six point eight, adopt Resolution Number 2020-201, authorizing the purchasing of one hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty-four cents in inmate-related COVID supplies using Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security CARES Act funding. Six point nine, adopt Resolution Number 2020-200, uh, authorizing entering into a contract with West Publishing Corporation for West Law Subscription Services in an amount up to one hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Six point ten, approve, uh, record of dispersments and approve claims. Six point eleven, adopt Resolution Number 2020-188, approving the intergovernmental cooperative agreement with the Shakopee-Metowakatin Sioux Community, transferring responsibility for the screening of and response to child maltreatment reports involving Indian children living on or near the reservation and who is a resident of the, uh, county to the tribe. Six point twelve, set a public hearing date of December twenty-first, 2020 at six thirty PM at the Jackson Town Hall to consider the turnback of frontage roads along Trunk Highway One sixty-nine in Jackson Township. Six point thirteen, set a public hearing date of December twenty-first, 2020 at seven thirty PM at Jackson Town Hall to consider the turnback of frontage roads along Trunk Highway One sixty-nine in Louisville Township. Six point fourteen, approve the request for rezoning sixty-eight acres from UER Urban Expansion Reserve District to UERC Urban Expansion Reserve Cluster District. James Klein, I think I'm getting that right, applicant and property owner in Section Thirty-three of New Market Township. Six point fifteen, approve payroll processing of personnel actions indicated below and hereby certified by the Employee Relations Director and the Appointing Authority to be in compliance with the provisions of Minnesota Statutes Three Seven Five Point Five Six through Three Seven Five Point Seven One and the Scott County Personnel System. Those are the fifteen items on consent. Is there anything anyone would like polled or any other fun items?
Mr. Chair, I will move to approve the consent agenda. And if I get a second, I just have a comment to make.
Sure.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on those fifteen items. So let's move to discussion. Commissioner Weckman-Brackey.
Thank you. I just want to point out for our viewers that even though we are adopting, um, very, very significant resolutions regarding the CARES Act funding for, for several different buckets, as we've called them, or areas on the consent agenda, that if you would, um, look back to our previous meetings and our previous workshops, and, you know, many meetings, we've, lots of people have worked hard on these. These aren't just being, you know, passed as, as resolutions blindly. These are things that have been discussed, changed, revised, researched. And, um, I for one feel quite good about them now. So just wanted to make that clear.
No, it's good to point that out, because, uh, in this new world, um, we are in studio. So this is things that people are seeing for the first time. But, yeah, they've been, all, all of these items have been hashed through. So that's a very good point to bring out, and we probably bring that out from time to time. Uh, this is not the first time that we've seen them. Uh, so a motion, second, any further discussion? Looking online, otherwise JJ is going to roll call us out of the consent agenda.
Commissioner Weckman-Brackey?
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf?
Aye.
Commissioner Beer?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Beer?
Aye.
Commissioner Ulrich?
Aye.
There we go. Um, all right, so we're going to move on to item number seven point one. Uh, receive a COVID-nineteen update. That's still going on, huh? I keep, I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful. I, you know, I'm hopeful. There she is.
I am. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, and now we can see you. Hey, I hope that you, being online, we didn't push you there, although, like I said in the earlier presentation, things look much more comfy out in the digital domain.
It's certainly a lot safer over here where I am, that's for sure.
I'm not going to take that personal. Was that, was that up against me? No, I'm kidding you, I'm kidding you.
There's very little I take personally these days. Um, I do have a PowerPoint, and Deb is going to pull that up.
And pretty soon, we're going to have to get used to saying, and JJ is pulling that up, as she is.
Excellent. And I'll just say, uh, next slide, uh, when I'm available, when it's ready. Um, so thank you, Commissioner Beer and Commissioners, for inviting me today to do a quick COVID update. Um, I'm, I'm glad we had a, a really, um, positive presentation prior to this presentation, because it's unfortunately, um, going to be a little bit of doom and gloom again. But, um, I'll try our good news when I can. Um, next slide.
Hey, be careful when you use the word positive. I'm certainly, you know, get a little gun-shy.
Good point. Thank you. Um, this is, uh, from our surveillance report. Um, we do publish this weekly. It is put on our, uh, website and, um, sent out to, uh, multiple sources in the community. Um, today, or yesterday, actually, we reached, we breached six thousand cases. In the last week, we have, um, had the highest number of cases to date on record of one thousand four hundred and thirteen. Uh, quite a few more than we did, um, the previous week, which was in the eight hundreds. Another thing to note is, um, forty-six Scott County residents were hospitalized in the past week for COVID-nineteen. That's quite a large number. And we also had six new deaths. Um, our total deaths to date are fifty-one. Those range from as young as forty-six years old to ninety-seven years old.
And Lisa, um, these are, once again, cumulative numbers, just?
Correct.
So the two hundred, two hundred and ninety-five has been the total, um, case of hospitalization in the county?
Correct.
Yeah.
And then the, the forty-six I mentioned was just for the last week alone.
Sure.
At least, I'm glad you pointed out that the prior report was in the eight hundreds. And my recollection is the one just prior to that, and these are weekly reports, was in the five hundreds. So we've gone to, in the five hundreds to eight hundreds, into the fourteen hundreds.
Yeah, it, it has dramatically increased as far as number of cases. You can also see on the right, um, Minnesota is in a semi-darkish blue, um, surrounded by multiple states, um, that are in, uh, very, very high. This is cases per hundred thousand rates. We know there's a lot of crossover between North Dakota, Wisconsin, Iowa, back and forth. So, um, just something to note. Uh, and next slide.
And for context, Lisa, uh, how many tests were completed last week that yielded the fourteen hundred? Is that rate on here too? I can't see the entire screen.
I, I can get that for you. I do not have tests per week on here. Um, but, um, I, uh, I have a slide coming up as far as positivity rate, but I can get the number of tests per week for you.
Positivity rate would be helpful, and the number of tests would be helpful too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Positivity rate is coming up. Uh, next slide. Um, daily confirmed cases. You know, back in, uh, August and September, um, we were thinking, wow, fifty cases in, in one day is pretty high. Uh, this past week, we had a day where we had three hundred and seven positive cases. It's definitely in an extremely accelerated phase.
Lisa, can I ask, and I think I've asked this type of question before. If we laid over the amount of testing that is done, or has been done, what, what would that graph look like if we put that over? I mean, would it go up about the same?
Um, I, I could do that for you. I'm not sure if it's going to go up about the same, but that's additionally why I've included a positivity rate. Um, slide coming up very shortly. Um, but we are, we do have the capacity to increase, um, our testing. Um, and we have been increasing it substantially, um, over the past several weeks to, uh, meet the demand. So I could also map that out. So I could also map that out as far as
I'm just wondering if we have the same amount of cases that we had, but we just didn't know it six months ago.
We do not. Unless, but we do not, we do track, I think it might be the next slide.
Okay.
Can we move, can we move to the next slide? No, we don't.
You know, if I could make a little comment here, you know, the data is one thing and it's important, but the reality comes down when you hear somebody like Bill Reynolds say yesterday at the scale service delivery, they don't know what they're going to do in the next snowstorm because enough of the drivers have covid 19 that they're, they just have no idea how they will handle it. So, I mean, then, then data and real life experience come together and paint a picture that is a real problem.
Yeah, when we look at just case counts, which you see here, clearly more testing is going to find more cases, but when we started doing covid testing back in July, we were getting at about an average of a 4% positivity rate. Our recent cases we're seeing as high as 25% positivity rate, 19%, 17%. So that does not, that is not impacted by the number of tests that we're doing, this is positivity rates, how many people are showing up at our clinic. Four months ago, if 400 people showed up, I was only getting about a 4% positivity rate. Now when 400 people show up, I'm getting a 25% positivity rate in some cases. So clearly it is definitely more, more spread in the community. You can go to the next slide. We're also seeing a dramatic increase in the number of the younger ages, younger adults and children that are positive. Again, it's not really a surprise, we also see a trend when we see a lot of 20 to 34 year olds, this is actually state data and our data mimics that state data, almost 50% of our cases are 35 and under, when we see a lot of 20 to 34 year olds increase with a spike there within the next incubation period, we're seeing the kids. So we're seeing the parents and then we're seeing the kids, then we're seeing the parents, so it's going back, back and forth. Next slide please. And here is the data that a lot of families wait for, this is the data for the Scott County rate per 10,000 for the past 14 days, this is what we initially were basing the, what model for the schools, what model should we be doing full day or distance learning or hybrid? The cutoff for distance learning was 30 and I mapped this out for you, starting just right before school starts, we were looking at the community positivity, the county rate per 10,000 was about 15 right before school started and then you can see how it has dramatically increased over time. Again, the cutoff is 30 for distance learning, we hit that, the 14 day period of 10 for October 4th to 17th. All the data is not in yet for the period of 11-1 to 11-14, we probably still have a few more in there, we were at 151 just the other day, we'll probably land right around 170, I'm guessing, if not more. So again, it's this, the rate in the community is not affected by the number of tests that we're doing, this is, this is an actual rate of per 10,000, so we are seeing more spread in the community. Next slide please. So just a little bit about what we're doing, again, we're still, we're ramping up our community testing, we're now doing three days a week and we are adding one or two more days, we are trying to solidify a location in Prior Lake to do more indoor testing because we, it's getting a little cold and a little bit snowy to be doing our outdoor testing, although it was 40 degrees yesterday and we had a very large clinic down in New Prague, we were expecting about 75 to 100 and we had almost 400. This is the pattern we're seeing at all of our clinics. The day before, we have maybe 100 people signed up and we keep opening up more slots and they keep getting filled, they keep getting filled. We've heard from several people in line that they tried to make an appointment somewhere and they were a week and a half out, or someone went to a clinic the other day and they told us they waited three hours. These are very, very fast moving clinics, we prefer to keep the people in their cars as much as possible and because it's safer for our staff and safer for the public as well, people don't social distance well when they're in a queuing line without their vehicle. So we have, we, actually my initial estimate that would be, was that we would be doing about 5,000 tests from the time we started till the end of December, we'll hit 5,000 this week. On average, we're doing in the last couple of weeks about 1,000 tests per week. So we've completed 4,636 tests, we have a clinic tomorrow and Thursday, so that number again will hit 5,000. So it will likely be 10,000 by the time, by the end of December and the state would like us at this point to continue doing additional testing. We've seen that wide range in positivity, I do have a chart coming up, but as low as in a couple smaller clinics, zero to as much as 25%. We have had, we've done some targeted clinics as well, again, these were, original intent was not to have a big wide all call clinic, but to have these targeted clinics in areas of community need, where we would see lower income, where we would see maybe some food distribution programs, long-term care, mobile parks, and we are utilizing community paramedics, our community EMTs, public health nurses, community health workers and for language assistance and several volunteers, and we are doing this in partnership with Carver and Lee Store, so we've done a couple there as well and they've been very, very well attended. And usually they're in line for maybe 10 minutes, so that beats, that beats the three hours, that's for sure, and we can get, hopefully by the end of this week, we'll have five day week, five days of options for people to attend. Next slide please.
A question on that if I could.
Yes.
Do you anticipate, and I know this is no foolproof idea, you know, to get a test just before Thanksgiving or just before Christmas, so you can have some idea whether you're, you know, contagious or not, and I know that's not a foolproof situation where you, you could test negative and then a couple of days later, you could, you know, by the time the event is on, you could, you could be positive, but do you anticipate a higher percentage or higher usage of these testings as we get close to the holidays, are you kind of ramping up for that?
Yes, we are, and thank you Commissioner Ulrich for your question, I do have a slide for that too. It is, it is coming up, but you are anticipating some of our planning. I can, I can just talk a little bit about that now, we are anticipating an increase in cases after the holidays, that's the bottom line, and we are trying to add more testing sites for people who are wanting to go get tested. There's no guarantee, it's, we can't determine that you're safe, but if you want to be safer, the recommendation is that you do go get tested prior to going on an outing, so you, at least you would know if you are negative at that point. Again, we have people who have tested on Thursday and were negative on Thursday but positive on Friday or Saturday, so there is no guarantee unless you're completely social distancing and isolating yourself in your home, quarantining for 14 days prior. But we are making, we are ramping up and anticipating a larger number of both prior to and after the holidays. This is a chart on our positivity rates that we've mapped out since we started doing these clinics back in July. In July, we had, it was about a 5.6%, 5.7% positivity rate, and at that time, we were already, Scott County was already higher than the state rate of about 4%. For quite some time, we were hovering at 4 and 5%. In, you know, some cases, one of those 10% was at a few, a meal program, and we anticipated having, seeing some larger percentages there, particularly for individuals who have low income and no access. So we were still bumping up, still looking at not too bad, and if I had to speculate why this might have, you know, why we are now seeing a higher positivity rate, I think there's a lot of factors at play in here, I think schools start, got back in session in person, and I think that there is covid fatigue and had some, some impact on that. The governor the other day basically just said we're seeing higher rates because people are not complying, but we are, you know, looking at nine, which we thought was bad, I mean, it changes our perspective daily, I was like, oh my goodness, we're at 9%, well, the following loop, we're at 18% and then 25% and 19%. So I unfortunately think it's going to get worse before it gets better. Next slide please. The previous slide was just represented our testing, this slide here represents all people in Scott County who have been tested, so this would include regardless of where they've gone, any clinic, any hospital and our testing sites, so even amongst all of the population in Scott County, we're also seeing an increase, it's doubled since week 39, and this is by week data, the previous one was the day, the by day. So we still, we're still seeing that increase in positivity rate for our Scott County residents. And just also to emphasize, we're seeing this all over the state, we're seeing this all over the country, so this is not just in Scott County. Next slide please. Some other work that we're doing, we still continue to do the case investigation, we are working with employers when they have a case, if they have not had a case previously, and just providing information, making sure that they know that they've had a case, giving them infection, infection control information, any resources and testing that they, offering testing, we recently had a PD department have a positive staff person and we went in and tested everybody and they were all negative, that's my, that's my happy story today. We have had cases in Scott County among employees that have come to work and exposed others and after the, the time period that has gone by, they've also been negative. So those are really good success stories in my, my mind, we, I know we have Cheryl Colash and Kevin following up with individuals who are positive, who are positive, people are following, to me that's telling me that people are following their operational service plans, wearing masks and social distancing, because those could be, have been really bad, but I think just because someone's positive, it's good to know that there are ways that we can at least create safer environments. We continue to meet with the superintendents, almost all our schools have gone to distance learning for, I mean, it changes weekly, two weeks ago, they thought they were just going to do secondary, now some of our schools have gone full distance learning because of not only the number of cases in the community, but they've had many positive cases in, within the school. And we continue to work with school nurses regarding isolation, quarantine exposures, who needs to stay home, who can come back, when they can come back. The other piece we've been doing is working with the hospitals and really monitoring situational awareness and what's happening there. On November 2nd, St. Francis did implement their hospital incident command system to address challenges due to covid. Some of the planning that they're doing is looking at the surge capacity for the increased covid patients because they're seeing quite a few, they're experiencing both of our hospitals, all of the hospitals throughout the state are experiencing labor pool and staffing shortages and we're nearing bed capacity and working to implement some early discharge planning. We do, we have not opened up our alternate care site, so we do have some other beds, I know that St. Francis's ICU is full, they are diverting ICU patients elsewhere and the metro is starting to divert patients, so even if you live in the metro and you are needed ICU bed, you might not be staying in the metro. Even if we have an alternate care site, we really are experiencing healthcare and hospital worker shortage, so I'm not sure we'll be able to staff those. I do also heard from Mayo this morning, they also have been at capacity on and off and they are currently monitoring their electives, but they haven't suspended any. St. Francis as of an hour ago said they weren't canceling any elective surgeries and 10 minutes later, the situation has changed so rapidly that they are likely going to be canceling a few of the elective surgeries. So a very rapidly changing situation.
Lisa, next slide.
Lisa, I have a question about our long-term care facilities, I know the National Guards activated some units to be working in additional long-term care facilities around the state and they're not activating their people who have medical training because they're trying to not take them away from their jobs, they're just activating other volunteers who are willing to learn and work in these nursing homes and long-term care facilities. How is the staffing going in our long-term care facilities? I don't think we have National Guard having to work in any of them, right?
As far as I know, no, we actually have been reaching out about once every week, once every other week with our long-term care facilities, we have at least five cases or more in 10 of our long-term care facilities right now, two were added this week, so that could change because as we have cases among the residents, that's when our staff start getting affected. So we will be reaching out to them again this week just to see if they would like us to come in to support with testing or to see how we can support those, but as of right now, I think they're doing okay as far as staffing.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next slide please. I just want to talk a little bit about recent executive order changes. Click, thank you. Through our case contact investigation and our, the epidemiology that has been done on this, in Minnesota, 71% of all cases in the last couple of weeks can be tracked back to exposures at bars and restaurants, private social gatherings and late night outings. Very clear cases that we can see, even in Scott County, there was a bar where the bartender was positive and everybody that was sitting at the bar, there was 13 people that got positive, that also contracted covid that day. Can you just click one? So they have, might as well just do two. One more click, two more, one more. One more. Thank you.
I have a question, Lisa, when you get, well, maybe I could ask it now. I'm surprised that I don't see anything related to schools, I know Prior Lake at one point in the last couple of weeks had 400 people in quarantine from school, and so I'm surprised that you're not seeing cases, I mean, from school going back home or whatever.
They're not as, I mean, that probably fits in the other 29%, but there hasn't been a lot of cases in schools as of a month ago, we are starting to see more now, but with schools now going on distance learning, this is where the governor is going to focus the efforts more so. So schools have been very, very closely monitored, they have regional support teams working with all the different schools, and the assumption with these changes is that most of the schools throughout the state will be distance learning. But they, those are tracked separately. So the, the big changes are, and that was already guidance that was out, the big changes are the bars and restaurants will be closed until 10, or starting at 10:00 PM till 4:00 PM, or 4:00 AM, pardon me. They can actually track, but most of the cases have occurred of transmission in bars and restaurants have occurred after 9:00 PM, just after that 9, 10:00 PM, that's when people started, are drinking more, that's when they get a little bit looser with some of their social distancing and masking requirements. There will be no seating at the bar and there's a limited capacity. Another big change, because we do, are seeing a lot of cases associated with weddings, funerals and other similar events, starting on November 27th, those will be limited to 50 persons and that's not the, that's not the religious ceremony piece, this is the after type, after party, 50 people as of November 27th and 25 people as of December 11th. We've been really working very closely with a lot of the weddings in the county and they have been, there has been some outbreaks, but they've been really quite cooperative in ensuring that people are wearing masks and social distancing, but they're, we have for sure had several outbreaks.
Hey Lisa.
And then the other, yes?
On that little footnote and kind of what you were talking about, so the actual event, what exactly is the limitation on that now, whether it's wedding, let's, let's use a wedding, you can have more people in the actual religious or whatever you want to call it, part of the wedding?
The ceremony piece.
Ceremony, how many, what is that number?
I'd have to double check, I believe it's the, I think it's the indoor, the new indoor capacity rule of 150.
Okay.
But you also still have to maintain that six foot social distancing between family groups.
Sure.
Yeah.
Right.
But I can double, I can double check that as well, it used to be 250 and now that's now, I believe that's changed to 150, but I can confirm that.
Well, don't, because by the time you do, it'll change, but the idea is that part of the ceremony or whatever you want to call it, that has a different number based primarily on the venue, most likely, and then it's the, whatever you want to call it, the post, the reception, that is when it really gets ratcheted down.
Correct.
Okay. I just, there was a question on that that came up recently, I went, wait a minute, I just wanted to double check for my own.
I, I think those standards for, you know, the ceremony
I, I think those standards for, you know, with the ceremony, for church services, for any indoor gathering where it's not a walk-around eat and drink are still the same, that, that one fifty, um, but based on square footage, still at the fifty percent capacity of the actual space. So there's, there's those two, two triggers that have to be met.
Right. And, and again, with also with the after-party from the wedding and et cetera, that has to end by ten. Um, again, this is very connected to the epidemiology and what we have found um, is leading to COVID cases and where, what the connection there is. And then the other, um, big change starting of, that started, um, last Friday, the thirteenth at ten PM is social gatherings in and outdoor is limited to ten and, um, three separate households. So we, I, we are, we would see, we're seeing a lot of cases. We saw a lot of cases related to like family backyard barbecues and, um, those smaller events where people are less likely to be concerned about, uh, some of that's, you know, the social distancing and masks, because your friends and relatives, um, so that, just getting a little bit, uh, too lax in some of those social distancing, um, requirements and, and out, in those outings.
So Lisa, since we're on this subject, um, let's, let's just hit it head-on, because I think this is a huge conversation in the community and on social media. Is the sheriff on? Luke, are you? Tell us, tell us about law, how this relates to law enforcement, you know? If, should people be calling dispatch about violations of this? What will happen? Give us the truth, please.
Um, do you mean regards to the executive orders? What's the context?
Especially the ten-person limit to social gatherings in private households.
Yeah, so since the beginning of the pandemic, the, uh, direction from the Department of Public Safety and the nurse office has been education over enforcement. So at this point, we have not issued any citations for violations of executive orders in the townships through the sheriff office. So we're, we're not looking for somebody to call us, say, there's eleven people at a house. Um, but we are getting to the point where we would start enforcing, for instance, if a bar was open at midnight, you know, we, and they, well aware of the guidelines at this point, you know, that, that would be a different piece that would need some enforcement, but that hasn't been issued either. Everybody's abiding by, by those rules. But yeah, the goal is, yeah, no different than, you know, the speed limits or putting out a speed trailer or trying to get people that have the speed limit not to issue tickets, if, if that sense. So it's the same, same philosophy, educational enforcement.
Great. And previously, there was a different number to call about this. Is that, is that still in place? Um, just worried about dispatch capacity, that kind of thing.
That was for a very short period of time. The state couldn't maintain the amount of calls that were coming in. So, no, people can all to report violations and whether an officer act goes out or not is, is the other issue. So, you know, we receive calls all day long about issues, but, uh, the way we respond is going to be up to the individual police department of what the, it is.
Wonderful, thank you.
And Commissioner Breckie, um, we get calls and emails daily about violations. Um, we also, um, have been taking just an educational approach. If it's an employer, we get a lot of calls about restaurants. And then we've been reminding them about the rules and sending out additional guidance, especially because it's changing so rapidly. And we also have been working in partnership with law enforcement. If we have been getting repeated complaints, um, about, uh, a restaurant, um, that's when I usually forwarded it over to law enforcement. Um, but, uh, the state is, um, doing random spot checks. And they are issuing citations and they are issuing cease and desist if they've gone to a place on a Friday and given them a warning and come back the next day and they've completely ignored those warnings. So they, they have, um, they have been issuing some of those. Um, and they publish the names of those that aren't, uh, complying.
Thank you. That's all good information for us, because we get a lot of questions about that.
Thank you. Uh, next slide. I just want to talk, uh, addressed Commissioner Alrick's questions, a little bit about how to minimize, how to minimize risk during the holidays. Um, this is definitely a public health concern. Uh, there is a spectrum of risk and, and I will talk a little bit about, you know, safe, safer, safest. Uh, at the lowest end of risk, the safest thing is during the holidays, and the governor mentioned this as well, just stay home, do a virtual visit, don't have any contact with anybody, and that will be your safest bet. Uh, next click. And, you know, I just added in some examples of ways that you can do this and still have fun. Have a small dinner with just the people who live with you or do a virtual dinner. Um, and, you know, in, uh, a recent holiday, I did a virtual dinner with my family and, and I had somebody in California and Edmonton and, uh, even in France. So it's a really good way of being, bringing people together. Another big concern is, um, shopping on Black Friday. Uh, we all know what kind of crowds that draws and that's, uh, going to be a hotbed for, uh, some exposure there. So shop online. Uh, next click. In the middle, it really is that compromise, you know? Uh, it's not as safe, but, uh, still maintain, you know, trying to be a little bit safer. Do, uh, masked outside, uh, type of event and get tested prior to any kind of short, um, visit indoors. Uh, next click. And just some, uh, another, some more examples helps, you know, go to small sporting events or have a small dinner with your, just your, a few of your extended family members, up to three households, up to ten people now. Um, and just follow those, um, CDC recommendations for hosting your gatherings. And then the last spectrum of risk, the highest one would be, you know, flying to your family visit and staying inside their house. Uh, that, that would be considered the highest risk. Next click. And, um, the recommendation is avoid traveling out of town, avoid shopping in, uh, crowded stores. And, uh, you know, if you, the highest risk is really attending those large indoor gatherings that you might see, um, with a bunch of people you don't know, if you don't know their exposure.
Lisa, can I ask what, Lisa?
Yes.
Can I ask why the, the, the highest risk level would be flying to visit family and staying inside their house? Why is that the highest risk?
Highest risk is because you're, you're going on an airplane, you're experiencing.
I've, I've heard the airplanes, it's, it's almost the safest place to be. They're, they're actually increasing the amount of people they can put on them.
Um, they are a little bit. Um, I don't think airplanes, um, have ever been cleaner at this point, from the beginning. But the bottom line is, there is, uh, Commissioner Wolf, there is circulated air in that airplane. And I think I've said this before, if someone coughs and sneezes on row seventy, in row seventy-two, it's sucked into the air vent and it literally is blown on you in row six. So that circulating air, um, you're really exposed for a long period of time in a confined space, um, with the other hundred people that are on that airplane. Um, and if you're on a three-hour flight, six-hour flight, it's just that, um, confined space with circulating air with a bunch of people you don't know. And there has been, um, many cases tracked to, to travel. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, another click. So I just added in here, top five things you could do to minimize risk. Um, we're not saying don't have fun, we're not saying don't enjoy the holidays. But, you know, really try and be smart. Wear your mask and wash your hands. Try and avoid people you don't know and other travelers. Get tested, that will increase your safety. To the point, if you're tested on Monday and you're positive, then don't go visit grandma on the weekend. Uh, again, not completely safe, but at least you're knocking yourself out of that equation. And quarantine, if you're exposed, fourteen days. You cannot test out of quarantine. Um, if you are exposed on day one and you test on day seven and you're negative, that doesn't mean you're okay to go out. You need to quarantine for that full incubation period of fourteen days. And lastly, try and be flexible. If needed, change your plans if you are positive or if you get exposed. So those are the messages that we're getting, um, where we'll be getting out to the community. Just ways, uh, one more click. Ways to be safer during the holidays and still enjoy the holidays while we, while, um, they are upon us. And I think that, next slide, I think that was my last slide. Oh, no, I'm sorry, it's not. Uh, what's next? We're going to do more testing. I mentioned that before, um, we've ramped up our case investigations. Uh, we are getting many, many calls. They've gone to a regional model. We are, um, assisting regionally once we finish our own. And we are starting to do, uh, mass vaccination campaigning, uh, planning, um, looking at, um, the different phases that will get vaccine. Uh, the first phase of vaccine will come, um, as a limited supply. Again, we won't be, um, involved in that until we get the second phase, at least when there's large numbers of vaccines available. That's when public health will step in and start assisting with essential personnel on the community. And then the third phase is just really sufficient supply for the entire population. We probably won't get to that for another year, uh, where we're, where we have enough for everybody. I also just put on here, um, the schedule for community testing. We are adding them all the time. Um, there's the link if you wanted to, want to sign up. We are in New Market Town Hall every Wednesday in November and December. Uh, we are at the Knights of Columbus every Monday in November and December. And, um, uh, Jordan Fire Station, we, we completed the one in Montgomery the other day and the Jordan Fire Station, three more days, three more times, um, this year. Uh, and looking to add, uh, Shaka P. in Prior Lake very soon. I think that was my last slide. Next slide, there we go. Here's my contact information. Um, I'm always available for questions, additional questions. And I, I'm getting you guys additional data if you'd like. And I will try and get, uh, Commissioner Beard, um, you want a number of tests completed? And I, I have easily have access to that on our clinics. I'll try and get that for the state, um, for you.
All right, Lisa, I got a question for you. Protocols, um, you cannot test out of quarantine, you mentioned. So if you know you've been exposed, you got to sit out the fourteen days and it is what it is? And get tested along the way or at the end of that or whatever? Is it, so do your fourteen days and then you should get tested? Like, what's the ideal? Kind of look at Leslie too and.
Yes.
Yes, okay. What if, or go ahead, sorry.
Oh, I was gonna say, Commissioner Bear, uh, thanks for your question. Um, yes, you should get tested on day fourteen. If you are negative on day fourteen, you're out of that incubation period. You could actually, I mean, we've had cases where the exposure happened, the individual tested on day seven, they tested on day ten, well, all negative, and then on day fourteen, they tested positive. So what that does is now you have another fourteen-day incubation period or, you know, even if you're, typically you get some, you, you're symptomatic, we're seeing more symptomatic and, and a, than asymptomatic right now. But that puts you at another incubation period while you're sick and you have to monitor your symptoms to three days after. So even if you've quarantined for fourteen days, that, it, the stop, the clock starts ticking again at, once you test positive.
So let's say you get a positive test. What is the protocol for that? You're, you're, you, you made it through, day thirteen days and day fourteen, oh, shoot, tested positive. Then, is it just another fourteen days and you're good to go?
Uh, well, it depends. It depends on how long you're sick for it, but they do say that after those fourteen days, you're not contagious anymore.
Got it.
Or three days post-fever.
Got it, all right.
It could be earlier.
Right.
It could be earlier, it could, it also could be later.
Being exposed.
Yes, yes. That's, that's, I mean, there's just so much, um, yeah. I'm not asking for a friend, in case anyone's, there's just so much stuff. It's like, it's nice to try to nail some of it down.
It's, it's a very, um, interesting virus, how it, it affects people differently. Some people have no symptomatics and some people get hospitalized, some people are sick for months. So it really just depends on the individual.
So that earlier map where you had all the dark blue states, is that, are those the states that are finding winter first? I mean, I'm kind of, I mean.
I, I don't think so, because.
It's like, okay.
I think it's been winter here for quite some time. Um, I, um, believe that at least the ones that are surrounding us, I think it's because we had a, I, I speculate, I will say, that it's because we had a mandatory mask, um, protocol in place prior to, and some of them still don't. So I think that that has something to do with it, um, in the, in the Midwest, as far as our surrounding states.
All right, any other questions here or online for Lisa?
Thank you.
Fun stuff.
Well, thank you very much. I, I hope the next time I come, I'll have a, a little bit of, uh, better news for you, but, uh, I wish you all well and, and be safe out there.
Thank you very much, you as well.
Thank you.
Um, did somebody make a motion to skip seven point two? Did I miss that? I don't know, because if that does, if we don't go through that.
Oh, okay.
Okay, okay. Seven, uh, eight-point, wait, what's all the laughter? There's a lot of laughter. Is that, we still got to go through seven point two?
Yeah, I think Tracy is online as we've kind of moved to the supervisor handling this for us.
So seven point two, I'll read it, fine. Uh, recognition of Scott County re-upper. No? Retire, oh, shoot, okay. Recognition of Scott County retiree, Deborah Brazel.
All right.
I don't know who Deborah, I don't know who Deborah is, I don't.
Only my brother calls me Deborah.
Or when you're in trouble. Deborah Brazel, you are retiring, young lady. Trouble, trouble. All right, Tracy's online.
Yeah, I am. And you know what? I would love it, JJ, if you'd be able to share the video there, so that maybe we can have Deb come up to the podium so that I can see her.
She, well, you should be, oh, maybe are we pointing the wrong way on that funky camera?
Chris was showing up just fine earlier.
I couldn't see her ever.
Yeah, that looks like it's, uh, pointed to the stars, but I don't know which way it's.
Just like starting the video, I think would help.
We have work at the podium happening right now, if you can't see that. She might not.
I just want to see her.
I see it, yeah, there we go, look at, see, man.
There we go. Thank you. I want to see Deb while I'm, while I'm reading this, so thank you. All right, well, um, thank, um, good morning, everyone. So, um, I just have a little thing to read about Deb. Um, it may be an open secret, but this was Deb's second stint working for Scott County. In the late nineteen seventies, Deb worked in a small and unassuming human services building that eventually came into its own as our large parking lot. Uh, after that year, Deb went on to her next adventure, which was working for a bank in Jordan. And because she really doesn't like working with numbers at all, she knew that would be a really short-term job. But twenty years later, she decided it was time to come back to the county. On January third of two thousand, Deb came back to Scott County, working at the front desk in county administration. One of her primary duties was to answer the switchboard, which was a perfect job for someone who loves to interact with people. And perhaps she was a little too enthusiastic, because she worked that first day and she broke out in hives and had to miss a few days of work. She was, she was concerned that we may not, we may think she wasn't a very reliable employee, but the people in our office were more concerned that she was allergic to the job. But it didn't take long before we all learned better. Over time, Deb, who was always eager and, and maybe even a little masochistic, took on more and more job duties. And then she was promoted to be the administrative secretary too and provided support to the Office of Public Affairs in July of two thousand two. Over the years, she became the backup as the deputy clerk to the board. And in August of two thousand eleven was formally promoted to that position permanently. As the entire organization knows, Deb has been the gatekeeper for many things, RBAs, contracts, meetings and the like. Even with that full to brimming plate, she always has a way of making people feel comfortable. As one coworker commented, Deb is always smiling and willing to help, even when you're late with your RBA. Um, over the, over the years, Deb has formed so many relationships at the county. Everyone knows that she's a joy to talk with and her caring and even motherly nature puts people immediately at ease. She's always thinking of others and takes time and care to follow up, uh, with others if they have something going on in their life. She also makes sure to recognize other people and she will often nominate staff for Spirit of Scott Awards. In addition to these amazing people skills, she is also highly respected by elected officials and coworkers, as well as those same people in the cities and townships and other agencies that she works with. And what an interesting year, Deb, for you to begin to retire. Working remotely and virtually and at the office. And for Deb, working with few people has been quite an adjustment. Yeah. Um, while we'll all miss her smile and her, hearing her laugh on a dependable basis, Deb is looking forward to spending less time on meeting minutes and more time with her family, including her grandchildren and her granddog, Charlie. And she timed it right, because now Deb can fully immerse herself in her favorite holiday and time of year, which is Christmas. We all wish you the best, Deb.
Thank you.
And we're all coming over to your house for Christmas.
Only ten people.
Well, there's, by then, maybe there'll be something new, eight people.
Okay.
Look at that, can we see that? Is that showing up on the?
So, uh, Tracy obviously couldn't be here today, but she asked if I would present her the plaque and it says, presented to Deborah K. Brazel in a.
in appreciation for your service to Scott County government, January 3rd of 2000 to November 30th of 2020.
Can you see her smile?
Yes, we can, yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna talk. So Tracy hit on many of the things that Deb brings. I can think of our administration meetings with the goofy little games we play with all the little facts that we have to try to figure out and Deb behind doing those, it just made them enjoyable and fun. During the pandemic, there were many days it was only Deb and I here for quite a bit of the day. And she was always here to prepare things and to go over the items. And I always appreciated that. She was always here no matter what. And the discussions that we would have at 7:00 in the morning or 4:30 at night. I think the other thing that resonates with me was the importance of family. Always the conversations were around her daughter, those granddaughters that bring her so much joy. I can't forget Buster, but also Charlie. She left me her Charlie on my desk for me to have as her memory. And these Charlie stories, I'm gonna miss immensely. They were always so uplifting and optimistic. And I think that's the other thing Deb brings is optimism and just that happiness and joy to work every day. Didn't matter if it was COVID or every single person in this office was late with their RBAs. She was always optimistic and we would get it done and we would make it and get it to the board on time. And that patience and her talking about family are just things that I'm so going to miss. And that uplifting attitude that you bring every day to this office. And just want to wish you the best in the future. And I hope I get to hear some more Charlie stories.
I'll call you.
You guys are making this hard. I have a bet with my husband that I was not going to cry and I hate to lose, so. You know, when I started here, it was almost 21 years ago. And when I walked in the building, I thought, man, I belong here. This is where I fit. And I hope that I would be able to retire from Scott County. But man, retirement was so far away and here it is. So I guess the old saying that time flies when you're having fun really is true. And it's been so much fun. I'd like to thank the current and former commissioners, administration, my supervisors and all my coworkers. You taught me so much and you gave me so many wonderful opportunities. Tracy and Wendy, when I started here, I barely knew how to even log into a computer. But you two took me under your wings. And I'm guessing maybe with a little bit of frustration some days because I don't always follow directions and listen as closely as I should. You two taught me everything I know about technology. So thank you for bringing me into the 21st century. Lisa, I'll always treasure the time we worked together in Guam. We had so many interesting conversations back there. And you taught me way more about politics than I ever thought I'd want to know.
Let's hear some of that.
And Lisa, you probably more than anyone gave me some of the most unique opportunities. And sometimes they were really outside of my comfort level. But you were always there to support me, you always had my back. Thank you. And to all the employees, the dedication and commitment that you have to the residents of Scott County is totally beyond compare. And because of you, I always felt a real sense of pride. And somebody would say to me, where do you work? And I could say, I work for Scott County. And to all my friends, and there's too many to mention, so many friends here. You were always there to support me and guide me and push me even when I needed it. We had so many good talks, lots and lots and lots of laughs and even a few tears. But you were the reason why I wanted to come to work every day. And I never thought of it as coming to work. To me, it was a chance to hang out with people who I really enjoy being with. And each and every one of you will always have a special place in my heart. But it is time to move on. And I would like to acknowledge my family. My husband Larry Borbuster, there really is only one husband, two names, but one husband. My daughter Nicole, her husband Jay, my grandson Cody, and of course, the girls, Kenz and Emma. And your Aunt Leslie, can't forget Charlie, the grand dog. And I'm sure my family has a lot of things in mind for me to keep me busy, especially the girls. They're already talking about decorating the Christmas tree and baking cookies and of course, going shopping and just hanging out and playing games and watching movies. And if that's not enough, Charlie loves to play ball and would play ball with me all day. And I also have those 800 books reading at home for me to read. So once again, I'd just like to say thank you for everything. I really appreciate having the opportunity to work for Scott County and with every one of you. And I'm gonna miss you all so much. Take care and thanks. Buster, if you're watching, I want the bat.
Couple of comments from us. I can only say ditto to everything others have said. And the only thing that I would add and, and I appreciate just everything about you, Deb. But here's something that, that I just so appreciate is how you worked with citizens. You know, how your relationship with, with our residents who serve on our committees and our commissions, residents who call just looking for their commissioner who they're mad at. By the time they get to us, they're not quite as mad. You have been such an ambassador for Scott County. You've, you know, you emulate that community engagement we want with how you extend Scott County beyond these walls, beyond our services. So with everything else, that's also true. And I just have loved working with you and you've taught me a lot. So thank you, and I look forward to continuing to serve as your commissioner though. So if you have some things, say, if you're not liking what you see, I guess my phone will ring and, and I'll always answer.
She's got the hotline, got the hotline, the bat phone.
I see Lisa's ready to say something. I just want to say real quick, thank you for making us look so good, or at least me. And that's one of the toughest jobs I think there is.
When I accepted this position, Tracy told me, your main purpose on this job is to make the commissioners look good. Thank you.
And that's no easy task sometimes, so thank you.
So Deb, here we are. I've been treating this moment a little like a toddler. If I don't think about it, it's not gonna happen. And maybe I'm a little bit more like Scarlett O'Hara, which is, I won't think about it today, I'll, I'll think about that tomorrow. But here we are and suddenly tomorrow is today. It didn't take a genius to see Deb's level of responsibility, competence, professionalism and eagerness to learn right from the jump. Way back when, as Deb noted, when the Office of Public Affairs had more staff and a need for administrative support, I spoke to the then administrator about getting that support. I'll never forget the conversation in his office. I want Deb, I said, and he smiled and said, everybody wants Deb. But I want her more, I said. And so poor Deb was tasked with keeping a trail of policy analysts and public affairs staff in line. Not a job for the weak of heart or of stomach. Years passed and through reorganization and other things, Deb was reassigned to OMB. But she never stopped keeping me in line. In fact, I depended on her, not like an assistant, not even like a coworker. I depended on her like a sister. Buster, this is your fault. That's how I've grown to think of her. Deb, you've earned every bit of praise, every accolade and every day of retirement before you. And Buster, Nicole, Jay and the kids have earned every minute of every day to spend with you. And I'm not gonna lie, this hurts. But our loss is their gain. And even in your own words, even the dumb dog. I wish you all just nothing but the best of health, happiness and love.
Is there anybody online who would like to say anything as well? Opportunity?
I would, this is John Ulrich. And Deb, I, I'm trying to figure out if I worked with you, I guess it's a full 20 years. I started one year after you did, one year and one day, I think it was actually. And I have just thoroughly enjoyed working with you all these years. And you have been kind and you're a person that extends grace and just really a lot of fun to work with. And I'm gonna miss you and I'm hoping if you're allergic to retirement, you'll come back. I said, I've said in life that I like change. Well, I'm learning that I don't like change so much and will miss you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, just a couple of comments, if I may. I echo much of what's said, particularly the comments about, Commissioner Ulrich just reflected about Deb oozing grace, I guess, just radiating grace to us. Other comments about her job is to make us look good. Reminds me of a story I wasn't sure I was going to tell, but I think I will. You know, I came here directly from St. Paul where we had people specifically hired to keep us out of trouble, make us look good and get us reelected. That's what they were there to do. And so they pretty much ran my life. And I got to tell you, after 12 years of that, I was pretty used to having somebody run my life. Responding to all my requests for appointments and telling me where to go. And in fact, the other day, I found one of my appointment cards. It was three pages long and down to the minute my date was choreographed. So I remember my first week as a county commissioner here, what, six years ago now. I had a pile of invites and things to respond to and I had them all piled up. And I heard that Deb was the clerk of the board. And so I just assumed that meant that she was my clerk too. So I walked in and laid them on her desk and said, would you please put these on my calendar? And she, she looked at them and she looked at me and she took one finger and she pushed the pile back down across her desk towards me and said, that's not the way it works around here. And I remember thinking, oh, boy, I'm in trouble. Because for 12 years, I did not run my life. And now she was expecting me to run my life. But I got to tell you, I think I secretly trained her in because I do notice that most of my calendar invites and so on come from Deb. And she somehow makes sure that to prod me until I respond or that I have something coming up, the little reminders seem to come along anyhow. So somehow, I think she accommodated my neediness and, and Deb, I just want to thank you for making my job as a commissioner easier than it, than it could have been and for looking out for, for all of us. But this is my comment in particular, thank you. And for looking out for my appointments and the people that serve because I asked them to serve on boards and commissions. Appreciate you taking care of them too. They're, they're the farm team, if you will, or the extension of our obligations. And I couldn't think of a better person to take care of those folks than, than having you looking over them. Bless your retirement. It's harder than it looks, speaking of someone who has a wife that's retired. It's, it's harder than it looks, but I'm sure you'll, you'll grow used to it.
Awesome. Yeah, that's a recurring theme is I remember walking in here for the first time, like, hey, what, where, who, why, what? Where do I, what's, and keeping that all running smoothly. And I'm really most grateful that I'd be running to St. Paul or remember specific, hey, what building is it? What, it wasn't the Capitol, it was a different building. What floor, what? So just thank you for not putting me on the blocked call list. You know, you always answer your phones, I was most appreciative about that. And it does keep everything running smoothly for, for all of the folks in Scott County. You know, and I've always said, you know, we've got some really good people here in, at Scott County. And I always go on to say, you know, I'm not like every organization, you know, whatever. You are one of the really good people. And so we're, we're losing a really good person. And JJ's been over there just shrinking, shrinking. Everyone's been piling on, you know, Deb's awesome and, no, not really, not shrinking. But big shoes to fill and that's, that's a testament to the kind of person that you are. The other reason why I know you've made a significant impact is I can kind of peek into the board conference room and I see what's sitting on the table there. And it's not the typical retiree coffee cake. So that must mean something in and of itself. I mean, they're individually wrapped, so that could be a Rona thing, but let's just take it that way. So thanks for all the time and years that you've put into this for the county, for the folks and for us. And boy, retirement is right there. Make the most of it, we know you will.
Thank you.
So how are we handling this? Are we doing a little something, something, a little, little bit of a break or no?
Yeah, we're supposed to take about a five minute recess here and everybody kind of just gets to walk through and.
Yeah, it's a drive, it's a, it's a drive through retire, it's, there's no testing, we don't think. Lisa, is she in there? She, there's a four foot cotton swab, but I don't think that has anything to do with it. All right, we're gonna take, we're gonna take a five minute recess. Ah, see, nice guy.
I just remember the first time Ryan Holzer presented at board. And Mike Beard sent him, where's the donuts? And Ryan just kind of looked and Mike said, first time you present, you're supposed to be. And Ryan was like, you're supposed to be in there.
Everybody's supposed to walk through. As doofers as it can be. There's JJ, there's one for you, go ahead. Ron, there's one for you.
Actually, I have an attachment, Tracy.
And now that I understand that, I'm sure Cindy will talk about it more, I really...
What, do we have five more answers?
Because, you know, other counties reported and then didn't have the absentees in there. I mean, I'm really glad we did it that way. I just should have been...
Is it because of the mail-in?
Because the mail-ins and Savage had some handcuffs. I mean...
We had 1,500 millions that day that we got after 2:00.
Wow.
So those had to all be processed, right, through the ballot board? And then we had to wait for Savage to redo their absentee and make sure everything totaled.
And some counties fell apart, and then people went to sleep, and then woke up, and it was different, like, different in a big way. That didn't go well either. So I am really happy that they did. But just those mayors in those towns were kind of...
Mr. Presenter.
Ready for me?
Well, almost, almost. Yep, Mike is there. John will be there in a second. There's Commissioner Beard. He's got his coffee or his tea. All right, we need a countdown for the camera.
All right, we are back from recess. Have some great Eileen's cookies to celebrate Deb Brazel. So, all right, let's look at item number 8.1. Looking to adopt resolution number 2020-196, conducting a public hearing at 10:30 a.m., or thereabouts, amending the county's capital improvement plan and authorizing the use of unspent proceeds of the county's general obligation capital improvement plan and refunding bonds, series 2019A. Danny, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, so we have three projects that we would like to use our existing bond funds and bond interest earnings for. All three projects have been previously presented to the board and approved by the board. The three projects are replacement of card readers across county facilities so that they can operate on one system, the addition of the LEC courtroom to the bond-funded projects, as well as partially paying the county's share of the medical examiner's facility that's being constructed in conjunction with Dakota County and Hennepin County. The card reader replacement was always intended to use bond funding, as that was approved, but was added after the original public hearing for issuing the bonds, so we needed to formalize that here today. The LEC courtroom was originally planned to be funded using OPEB savings from 2020, but with excess bond funds available, and we no longer needed to use those funds, which have a lot more flexibility going forward. The medical examiner facility was planned to be paid through annual payments to Hennepin County for our portion of the facility, approximately $100,000 a year for about 20 years. Currently, we're estimating our savings from projects to be about $2.25 million when we're completed with projects, with interest earnings of about $1.3 million. Currently, so about $3.55 million available right now is our estimate. I do want to note that the resolution does have a higher number in that. In talking with bond counsel, they said use a little bit higher number because we don't know if we'll have one additional interest earnings. There's also some contingency funding still in some of these projects that may come back, and we didn't want to have to come and hold another public hearing for those funds to be available to us. These funds will completely cover the card reader and LEC courtroom projects and about a third of the medical examiner's facility, with the remaining funding from the OPEB savings for that specific facility. Bond savings and interest earnings can only be spent on eligible projects, and they require a public hearing and amending the CIP in order to utilize the funds for these projects. The LEC courtroom being put into place saved the county about $300,000 to $500,000 in expected future operating costs. And then the medical examiner saves us about $100,000 in operating costs that are already incorporated into our forecasted budget. So with that, I'd recommend conducting the public hearing and then consideration of adopting the resolution.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to open the public hearing.
I'll second it. Mr. Beard.
We have a motion in a couple seconds. Is there any discussion on that? Otherwise, JJ is gonna roll-call us to vote on having, opening up public hearing.
Commissioner Wykman-Brecke? Commissioner Wolfe? Commissioner Beard? Commissioner Beard? Commissioner Ulrich?
All right, 11:43. I don't know if we need to mark the time, but we are open for public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I move to close the public hearing.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Looking online and to my left and right. Otherwise, no one's streaming through the hallway. No one's in here. Go ahead, JJ, take it away.
Commissioner Wykman-Brecke? Commissioner Wolfe? Commissioner Beard? Commissioner Beard? Commissioner Ulrich?
Closing said public hearing.
Commissioners, unless you have any questions or comments, our recommendation would be to adopt resolution 2020-196.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to make...
Go ahead. I'll second it.
I'll be happy to make that motion. This is Beard.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion left and right, online?
I do have a question.
Sure, yes.
If I could, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely.
Can you hear me okay? Okay, I'm having a little trouble with my mic. You mentioned OPEB or post-employment benefits paying off part of the medical examiner facility. I'm just wondering if we've also speculated using those to pay off CDA for the ERTs. Is there money to do both?
Yes, so there is still funding available to pay off the remainder of the ERTs facility. Our plan has been that we would hold that decision off until later in 2021, really anticipating closure of the 2020 audit, just to make sure that we didn't have any payback due to CARES Act funding or anything else. That's kind of our security against the audit there, though.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Otherwise, JJ is ready to go.
Commissioner Wykman-Brecke? Commissioner Wolfe? Commissioner Beard? Commissioner Beard? Commissioner Ulrich?
All right, thank you very much. We are now going to move on to item 9.1, to receive a 2020 general election closure update. And I'm gonna look at my screen, because I'm thinking...
Cindy's online.
And you hear me okay?
Hey, Cindy.
Mostly, I think. Try that one more time, Cindy.
You hear me okay?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean... It's a little quieter here for some reason.
Quieter?
I know. Your name and that word rarely go together. Anyway, we can say that in jest because we just can.
No, I will note that no one said breathe before her presentation.
You did notice that they had to put like an hour on here because just you guys ask questions all the time.
No.
Anyway, so the election 2020 for Scott County at least is over. And I have this presentation, of course, for you. You're gonna see, John, you're gonna see some very, a lot of similarities to what I presented at scale with some additional information on here because it's more pertinent for the board. But this is, I showed you this a few weeks ago, maybe, and my anticipation for the general election for absentee at that time was about 45,000, and we were darn close. We had 46,624 accepted, meaning those are the amount of ballots that we had to process here. Excuse me, not just here, but across all of our absentee area. So 51,000 were actually requested, which is an anomaly. That number is outrageous. I wouldn't have expected that. And it had caused just a little bit of problems in that we sent out all these ballots. Voters got a little anxious due to the mail delivery, and they went, ended up going to the polls, the absentee poll, which was fine. But we ordered 115% of all of our ballots, and we were running out. On Election Day, we had a lot of people running and delivering ballots. And it wasn't just that voters received a ballot and they went to an in-person and voted, but it's also those votes that came back and we had to reject because they didn't have the proper information on their envelope, or they came back returned or undeliverable. And so those other, those folks had to do an alternative method of voting if we couldn't get them their ballot in time. So there was some, a lot of spoiled ballots, a lot of rejected ballots, a lot of ballots. Not a town that hung out there yet, but enough that caused us to run out even at 150% of the voters. You can go next. This is just again for our audience, if nothing else. How did we end up, and why is it that we needed 25 temps? And why is it that we were here on Saturdays and Sundays, even our temps, and working well into the evening? We generally, in the last two weeks, did not get out of here before 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock at night. I don't think any night. So it was because of the magnitude of those ballots coming through our doors. And still, we ended up with a debacle on Election Day with still an amazing amount of ballots being dropped off at our drop boxes. You can go to the next. I thought this would be of interest to you. You know, this year, for the very first time, we stood up our city absentee locations. And with that, you can see that at least 15,000 voters did not have to come through our doors, which, in a time of COVID, in a time of keeping people safe, and really in a time of how do we best manage the number of voters that we anticipated voting by absentee. Overall, we, of course, have a lot of temporary staff, but a lot of those staff were either at absentee ballot drop-off locations, or they were busy mailing ballots or doing ballot board. So to handle the amount of people coming in, we and the cities could not have done a better job at trying to get voters what they needed as well. A lot of great comments from our voters on multitude of levels. They loved not having to drive across the county to drop off their ballot, particularly if they're a little bit afraid of what the mail and whether or not their ballot would get here in time. They also really enjoyed still handing it to a person. I had a comment from a person that works here that actually lives in Carver County who got a mail ballot, just wanted to drop it off, and had to wait in line for two and a half hours just to drop it off because they didn't have a separate drop-off location versus, "I'm gonna vote in person." Everybody stood in the same line. And they didn't set up all these other locations, so their alternative was go to Carver County and go to their government center and stand there with everybody else. Thankfully, we made the right choice, and we're gonna bring people in. We have dollars to help us. And then we go from there. So 34,611 ballots, we actually mailed. And this, of those 34,000, I mean, the cost to mail a ballot is about $1.99 for all of the envelopes and all of the data that has to go with it, as well as the postage. You can move on. So here is a little bit of election, the 2020 turnout. We knew that there was 88,000 voters at the end of the state primary. We knew going into Election Day that we had 94... We knew going into Election Day that we had ninety-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-two that were registered. But both absentee registrations and elect, Election Day registrations added almost another seven thousand. Now, I want to put a caveat in there because of our ninety-four thousand, six fifty-two, we know that some of those people that were registered here on Election Day actually re-registered in different locations, in different counties, just like people from other counties registered at our polls. Some of our folks registered at other, at, at, in other county polls, too. So after we get done managing and doing all of our, uh, data entry for those voter registrations and all of our history, the history's been posted, but the voter registrations are still being processed. Just the paper ones, uh, with our poll pads, we can update all of those that registered at the polls, but everybody who registered with absentee who gave us a paper one. And anybody who gave the cities a paper one at their absentee locations, we have all of those that yet to enter that staff is working on. So after all is said and done, hopefully by the first couple of weeks of January, we will know kind of where we sit at a voter registration town. Once we hit a six figures, there are a couple of other rules that pertain to us as a larger county. So we'll have to manage those as we get there. But as you can see, of the number of voters, so we had eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and seven people actually vote. Of that eighty-eight thousand, fifty-three, almost fifty-three percent of them voted by absentee. Really saved the day when those, with those voters as they went to the polls and, and, and gave them a little bit of getting through the polls in a more efficient manner. Not in every polling location, but in majority of the polling locations, they were able to move through that with a little bit more ease. County-wide voter turnout, almost ninety-four percent. We are one of the higher counties with that, with that, uh, turnout. We have not hit that number. Not in my history here, um, when, since I've been involved with elections. The other things that I thought, just fun facts, the greatest, the precinct with the, with the biggest number of registrations is Bell Plain City. Which surprised me, um, and, oh, sorry, I should have put my mute. And then the precinct with the highest voter turnout was actually Spring Lake Township. So kudos to them for, um, for pushing it through and managing all of those folks as they came through. We do know Bell Plain City is a very large precinct. They have one precinct. It's very large. It is close to four thousand people. I did have a staff member, believe it or not, that actually works in elections that had no time to go, to, stop at Public Works and vote, and she didn't want to do it in the envelope because she was going to have to be one of them that's going to have to process it. She ended up going to Bell Plain City on Election Day and voting. And she wanted to do two things. She wanted to see how were they set up, how was it being managed, so she could maybe bring back some information that we could use in the future. In, in addition to, she wanted to kind of see what the, the weight is and, um, how they were cleaning and all of that. She said, it was great. They could be a poster child for all precincts. Again, that was the only one she was in, but they could have been a poster child, she said, for everything that they did right. Fifteen minutes, she was in and out, people cleaning in front of her, people cleaning in back of her, very, very well set up. There was an in, there was an out, um, into the polling locations, so there wasn't any, any voters that were in conflict with each other as they're going through the doors. So it was very well organized and well managed. So kudos to the Bell Plain City, who at least they were called out. As, as far as running their election on Election Day very, very smoothly. You can move. The other, uh, fun facts, these are the federal offices and the state offices. I thought, you know, just for your information, if you haven't paid attention to the detail, we know that Trump in our county won the, won the popular vote. It's crazy. So there were areas that he didn't do so well, and in the areas of Savage, everybody, every precinct except for one, and all of city with the exception of two, Biden won the popular vote. One precinct in Par Lake is, is, uh, Biden won also the popular vote. But Biden won those precincts in a, in a pretty close percentage compared to some of the other precincts where Trump won the popular vote. Overall, of course, we know that he took that. And just, uh, one other fun fact is that the Republican Party won all of our races here in Scott County except for State Senator District Fifty-Six, which was formerly held by Dan Hall. You can go on. We did conduct our canvassing board and our post-election review. Uh, our canvassing, or before I get off Election Day, I wanted to briefly talk about our results on Election Day coming in so late. And I talked to, I, I mentioned the same thing when I was on the scale meeting yesterday. On Election Day, we planned on going into it, everything that we had received through Monday night had been gone through the canvassing board, excuse me, canvassing, excuse me. It had, it had gone through, um, the ballot board process. They had been opened, and they were ready to be running, run through the tabulator. All of the Sunday, Saturday, Friday work was actually run on Monday morning. All of Monday's work was going to be run with Tuesday's work. And we didn't anticipate that there would be a whole lot of activity because the polls were open. We did set up all of our drop-off locations, however, for those folks that had a ballot in hand that really didn't want to go to the polls and didn't want to drive to the county. So we did set up our eight drop-off locations that started at seven AM and they closed at three. At about eleven o'clock, we started getting calls from some of those folks who said, you have to come here and pick up these ballots because my box is full. And then we thought, oh, we're going to be in a world of trouble. If these, if this is the, what we are going to get today, if, if for some reason our voters with absentees in hand decide that they're going to drop those off, uh, we were a little bit sideways. We ended up having about six people out driving, some people picking up ballots, some people dropping off ballots, off ballots at the polling location. And when we started getting these back, by noon, we got our first ones back, and I'm like, oh, no. And so we ended up ge, getting a whole bunch of people, probably four to five teams of two, of course, doing the canvassing board, getting them in, stamping them in, going through the acceptance process, which isn't something that, that is real quick. You have to look at every ballot envelope, the signature envelope. You have to validate that this ballot belongs with this person by a special ID that is on there for when we issued it. We have to make sure that, you know, the voter put their ID on, that it matches, that the voter's signature is on there, that if there's, it was non-registered, that there's a witness, the witness is from Minnesota, or, um, or a, or a notary, that the witness's address is on there and the witness signed it indicated what type of proof. So there's a lot of checks and balances that these, uh, that, uh, this ballot board has to do. If some things don't match, then you can have, you can go around and try to find the application and see if you can get it to match there. You can check their voter record. So it does take a process to get through these absentees to get them through the ballot board process. Once that's complete, they go to the next person who actually goes into the state system, and they have to accept them all and mark them all that, yes, we received the ballot. But before we can open them, we've got to then do an, um, a request out to all the polling locations to make sure that those voters did not vote in person before we opened that ballot. Once we get that information back, then we can start having people open the envelopes to try to get those ballots out, make sure that they're good. Make sure that there isn't any extraneous marks, that they're not ripped, there's nothing that's going to cause them not to run through the tabulator. We do not look at who they voted for. We don't really care. We don't look at, did they over-voter or anything like that because it's the voter's choice. We don't really care. We actually don't even know who the voter is because we take all those golden rod envelopes out of the white signature envelopes before we even open the golden rod. So we, we split them by precinct to make sure they have the right ballot. We take them out of the whites, put them in one where, put them, the golden rods in another, and then we go through. And then two judges, of course, have to initially its ballot. If for some reason a ballot needs to be duplicated, which of course happens, then we have to have two judges sit and duplicate these ballots. After all of that is said and done, we balance. And then we can first start scanning. We didn't start scanning ballots on Election Day till seven PM, which put us way behind. Lessons learned that for us, knowing that these drop-off locations are, are things that our voters really wanted, that they utilized heavily, that we would have those ballots being picked up all day long and, and brought back, and we would have started ballot board. You know, we probably would have gone to our, to these by, you know, nine o'clock. Ballot board would have started at ten versus starting at one. After we started getting them back. So it was, even at three o'clock, when we got the last of the, the ballots in, I'm like, oh my gosh, almost fifteen hundred ballots. Usually in a day with four teams working, you get through about twelve hundred in about eight hours. So these guys were going gangbusters. Also, at about four-thirty, remember, we have a high percentage of our people working in elections that were temporary staff. Some of those folks wanted to go home. They'd been here since six-thirty. They were here working all weekend, and they're like, we're, we're cashed. We're done. Good luck. And I'm like, oh, no. But it is what it is. So we were late in reporting because we made the conscious decision, even though statute allows us to process absentees for two days after Election Day. It has nothing to do with ballots they received. Like, these came to our location. We had them in hand, timely, met all the statutory requirements. But we stat totally could have had two more days just to get them through. We chose that when we reported at the end of today, we wanted to report it a hundred percent of what we'd received in. Not hold them off like some of the other counties did, who got their results in a lot quicker than we did. We were also on hold for the city of Savage. The city of Savage did not ba, they, their absentees didn't balance. And because this is the first time some of these cities actually, um, did absentee in the ma, and got the magnitude that they did, they, they always, they always balanced in total. But I'm like, you need to balance by school district. I mean, you need to balance by precinct, and then school district within the precinct. And if that, if none of that all aligns, you're going to need to duplicate, and you're going to need to rerun all your ballots. City of Savage, at about eight o'clock at night, had to start rerunning their fifty-four hundred ballots that they had in, and had accepted through their absentee. They didn't report to us until about one o'clock in the morning. City of Shakopee said that they balanced, and we got their information the next day. We found out they didn't balance. And they chose to rerun, well, they had to. They had to fix and rerun all of theirs. They did that the following day, again, because they told us they bounced, and we figured that they probably didn't. But they didn't really know possibly what they were looking at. And then once we showed them, they're like, oh, no. So they reran, and they reported to us again, uh, later on Wednesday, and then we went in and we changed some of that, uh, some of the systems. So we reported late. Most counties chose not to run all of their ballots that day. Particularly, um, the ones that, that they received, well, most, most counties don't have drop-off locations on that day either. So Dakota County does. They chose to hold everything that they received on, on that Tuesday. And said, the heck with it. We're going to run that, and part of Mondays as well. We'll run that, continue to run into the night. We'll con, continue to run through the next day and, and report. And you're, and if you went to bed thinking, hey, by the way, this is the election result, and you woke up the next day, I had one county commissioner call me and say, what the heck happened? This person won, and by, within, you know, twelve to twenty-four hours, somebody else won. And I'm like, well, again, that, that, that could definitely happen, particularly with the amount of absentees that we received. So my explanation to you, my expla, explanation to the, to the voters is that Scott County took, made the decision that we were going to post all of our results. So when we said they were final, they were final, unless there was some deviation that someone had to rerun. And those changes are going to be very, very, very small. All right, any questions before I move on?
Cindy, just a comment. This is Commissioner Beard. Um, so when we looked on the Secretary of State website, it could say all precincts have reported, and that would be an accurate statement, even though the absentee or mail-in ballots hadn't yet been reported, which is kind of.
Well, they have been reported. The ones that tabulated to that point were reported.
Okay. But the point was, it was easy for someone to look at the Secretary of State and think, oh, they're all in, when in fact, they weren't all in. Um, so you have to have, look, read carefully in the fine print, and it says they're all count, or all counted. Is that what means they're all in? Everything's tabulated?
Well.
There was a difference there in the way we were reading it.
Yeah, well, and the Secretary of State, what they said to us is, when you leave on Election Day, let us know approximately how many or what percentage of your absentees have not been yet processed.
Okay.
And that information isn't on SVRS or on the state site. They don't ask you to report how many you have on hand yet to be counted.
Okay.
What they say is, did all of your precincts report? And the answer would be, yes. And all of our polling locations reported a hundred percent. But the absentee, that's where the, there's no, there's nothing out there that would have told any voter or any visitor that, to that site that there was a large quantity that are hanging in county offices. And most county offices don't have, did, I mean, of course, we're not anticipating fifty percent of our voters vote by absentee. So we generally have those all processed and, and unoften reported. We don't hold them back. Well, this year was different. Nobody had staff, unless they hired twenty-five temps to get those in, and if, unless they reported late. The problem with also the state system is it, the state system with the state reporting says you have to have not only polling location, even if we got the polling location in, it's like, why can't we show at least partial results, saying, here's, here's what this is to date? And they said, because it confuses voters. Then all of a sudden, you, you do your absentee, and then it changes dramatically. They're going, voters say, once that precinct reported, it reported. Well, the same issue still exists. If you report ab, so nothing shows until you report your absentee totals and your precinct totals.
Okay.
So city of Savage, you saw nothing until after one o'clock.
Yeah.
Because the city of Savage hadn't reported their absentee totals until, to us until one o'clock. So there, uh, everything else that was run, all the county work and all of the polling location, it sat there until the system knows that there's a tabulator out there that still needs to report to us. And until that tabulator totals come in, and that tabulator gets closed, it doesn't go anywhere. It just sits as if there's zero reporting. It's, hopefully, you know, because of these issues, we can change things a little bit. It's just that, that, you know, you're kind of damned if you do and damned if you don't because you don't know, even if you report, does it also give a false impression to the voters unless you can tell them approximately what percentage of the votes are in? You know, you could say that the precinct reported, but maybe there's forty percent of the votes yet to come in on, against that precinct. Those are things that currently we don't have the ability to do, and the state system, as antiquated as it is, doesn't have the ability to show and reflect. So they, their stances that you need to report both, so you have the most accurate totals at that point in time.
Right, okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none. So last Friday, the canvassing board met. It was open to the public. The canvassing board always has to be held by, well, it's, generally, it's the Friday after the election, but because we had to wait for those absentees that were postmarked on time on or before Election Day for seven days post-election, and by the way, we had sixty-two ballots. So we do understand that the majority of all of our ballots were in prior to Election Day. Sixty-two ballots came in that we had to count, so we couldn't canvas until the Friday following seven days post. We had our five canvassing board member, members in there, and then Pat Myra and her spouse from State Rep District Fifty-Six A. There was a representative that gave her name, but we couldn't understand it in her mask. She was from some DFL Center for Elections Integrity. There was a representative that gave her name, but we couldn't understand it in her mask, she was from some D F L Center for Elections Integrity. I don't think that's the true name of it, but it's got those words in it's all. One way or the other, and then there was two election administrators in the room who. Did kind of a summary of what all happened throughout this election, had all of the reports. Most of you have already been in these types of meetings, so you understand how that process works and then. Of course, allowed anybody to inspect any of the tapes that came from tabulators or any of the reports that came from the absentee. That closed without any incident. And three districts were chosen by that canvassing board uh for the post-election review, which is going to occur this Thursday. At nine o'clock in the boardroom. There's a little bit of a misnomer because even in the canvassing board, people were talking about the post-election review. And really, this happens at every election, I mean, excuse me, every even year election after the general election. And the only purpose of it is to say, does our tabulators and our high speed. Scanners for absentee, are they? Are they accurately counting the votes? So it's not a recount, people can't challenge. They can, they can see what the judges are doing, um only if there's a question about a ballot, but even in that case, observers that come into here. Can they're only, their only um purpose there is just to observe the process. Are we doing things the way we should, do we have two judges from two different parties? Who are sitting at the table determining. Who wins the vote for each of these races, are they, then they, of course, they they uh count them and then they report them, we compare those. Against what we showed from our absentee and our polling locations. You can see the variance there, one half of one percent, or if. The precinct chosen is less than four hundred. Uh votes in that precinct, then we can only have a variance of two votes. Those are if it's unexplainable, it's like, it's like I, we have no idea why it was off. Sometimes you will be able to see why it's off. If someone circled an oval. And then they scratched it out and they circled another oval, the system might not have counted that either way. Because it's gonna assume it's an overvote, all it sees is marks, doesn't see that, you know, it doesn't determine voter intent. So the judges determine that voter intent and there could be variances above and beyond this. But there needs to be, it could, it needs to be easily explained, if there is a variance. And if there's a question about a ballot and they seek to have the election administrators come over and and and. They answer their questions, those ballots can be asked to be seen by the observers. And they can, they can understa- they can hear what's the question. But again, they can't challenge the decision. They can't challenge the outcome. The precinct selected Blakely, we were super jazzed about that because they're teeny tiny little thing, that recount should go pretty quickly. And then, of course, we have, and then Savage, they're like, what the heck, um I know we talked to the clerk and they're two precincts, that means. That clerk and and the clerks of the township and this and the uh city needs to provide those judges. They have their judges, they have their party affiliation, they're trained in, so they're the ones who are to to provide the judges for this. For this uh post-election review of the tabulating system. And uh any any presidential year, these are the three offices that get counted. And they will do them one by one, so for Savage, it might take a little bit of time, Blakely, I'm assuming will get through a little bit quicker. Questions? You can go on.
Yeah, real quick, um you may have said it already, but um of the counties in Minnesota, do do all of them do this?
Yes.
Okay. In other states, who knows? But for us.
Yeah, I don't, we don't, yeah, this is.
I don't wanna get there, I'm just for, but for Minnesota, our counties, I just didn't know if that was something we did, um. So all of the counties in Minnesota do exactly what you're describing here.
Right, and if we hit a hundred thousand votes. We will have to select our, excuse me, a hundred thousand registered voters, then we will have to select four precincts.
Uh and one ba- uh one question on the canvassing board. There was five canvassing members plus those other five people, correct, just to be.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Someone to think uh otherwise.
Correct. The canvassing members this year was a representative um from the city of Shakopee. It was Commissioner Beard was present, Tracy Servenka was um John Ulrich's. Appointed representative. We had the district court administrator and myself, we're the five canvassing board members. And then the rest of these folks, the election administrators are Julie Hansen and Chris Lucky.
Yeah, I just think it's important, you know, there were elected people there, there's different people there, plus there was these other five people just.
Absolutely, it, both of these are open to the public, now. We do, I, we have heard, we we heard comments for the canvassing board that we knew people were coming. We have also had been, I've been on some phone calls with folks that said that they want to be po- present for this post-election review, which is absolutely fine. But we do limit ten people in a room, so. They will have to socially distance in their masks in the hallway and they can still watch and observe. And again, the the observers really don't challenge and they don't, they're not at the tables anyway, they're not seeing the votes, they're watching the process. So. What they can do is is fairly limited, but I maybe they're there also because they want to see the result, we heard about the democracy suite. The Dominion voting equipment. Being, having some issues. Uh or being programmed to deliberately vote one way or the other or count votes one way or the other. The state of Michigan actually sent something out to our our Secretary of State, their Secretary of State, sent something to our Secretary of State saying. This is what happened in our state. And it was the one county that really was impacted. They had, they had some programming done, the, they were supposed to update three media files. They updated two of the media files, but not the third one, that transmit results, which resulted in. Some of those counts on the electronic file, not reporting correctly, but the tabulator results were correct. When we get the tabulator results back. For that Thursday and Friday after the election, well, sometimes it's it's Wednesday and Thursday. If we had that a campus right of war on Friday, but in this case, we we had an extra week. So we took Thursday and Friday and every tabulator tape. Is taken out of the envelope that's it's it's brought back to the county with. And that data is verified against the electronic results that we receive from the polling location. So before we do anything, we do an absolute hand count or a hand viewing of every tabulator tape. To make sure that what we received electronically is what that tabulator tape says, we had no variances, thankfully.
Uh and that's the the point of the uh the hand count of the three precincts. Uh is to 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 verify with three random samples. That the um the ballots uh were actually counted by the software as the voters intended.
Correct. Correct.
So it's an important part of the of the electoral process because it helps um. Instill confidence in this in the system that we've worked uh with here, so.
If there are additional procedures, like if this variance is unexplained, it's greater than a half percent. Or if there's greater than two in like Blakely Township, that could be unexplo- that's not explainable.
Yeah.
There is, this is process number one, then there's a secondary one if we, if if these things aren't, these thresholds aren't met. And then there's, there's actually four steps if it continues to have issues, so. We've been doing this, we've been holding, we've been using this equipment since twenty fifteen, we've gone through this process in sixteen and eighteen.
Yeah.
And have not had that issue.
Evan, yeah, okay.
In those years, so we're not anticipating that it's gonna be an issue this year.
Good deal, let's see, it's done for the uh yeah, to foster uh confidence in the integrity of the process. Once the ballot is in the door, um there's, we can debate the efficacy of walk up registrations and mail in ballots till the cows come home, but. Once the ballot is in in the door in the uh precinct or in your hands. Uh but there's, there's very high confidence in the integrity of the process, I think that's the point here.
Right, and you know, I was surprised because, you know, we had all these temps in here and I think a lot of them. Were highly motivated individuals that wanted to make sure that the election process was handled without, with with the greatest integrity. They wanted to make sure that what we say we're doing, we're doing and. They were blown away, you know, it would be great to put those twenty five people. In a room and be able to explain to the voters, them coming off the streets, well, not the streets, but you know what I mean. Not working here, not full-time staff to say, holy cow. It is a long, onerous, hands-on, two people at all times process. That it's just, they were, they were shocked, they said what they learned in their six weeks here totally changed their mindset. And they were out there talking with other folks who were claiming voter integrity and how. There's a mismanagement of ballots and there's this fraud and they're like, oh my gosh, you come and work in those offices and you're gonna see how. That is impossible, because you have two people looking at every single thing, every envelope. Your two canvassing board ma- or excuse me, your uh ballot board members and then you're opening and you're always sitting with two members and. There's so many cross checks and double checks that they're going, if if you can cheat in an election, good luck, because it's not gonna be in those offices. So, not once the ballots get there. Anyway, we'll move on. Now we're gonna talk about costs and I and I've done this, I, what I did is I, I'm gonna do this in three different slides, I'm gonna say. We have, we got an elections grant from the from the office of the Secretary of State. Worded, what did we get? What was our share and then how did we spend it, which you can see on the screen here. And if you have no questions, we'll move on to the next, then we got federal cares dollars of which our county. Had a portion that was, they said was earmarked for uh the elections process, we're not done. With this, this is a year to date figure, we still have people working overtime, we don't have all the invoices paid, but the invoices remaining are fairly minor. But to date, we know that we have about two hundred and seven thousand dollars that we. Have, that we are planning on getting reimbursed for from the cares, the federal cares. So between this and your and your other pool, we are already up to about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that someone else paid for. And then this last one, this is actually. Comes out of taxpayer dollars. These are, most of these are fairly, th- th- this is what we, it costs us every year regardless. Um, we did have a little bit more vendor printing this year, our postage, our share of that postage. Was still pretty high, most of this was either uh. Uh from our primary presidential nomination primary, again, this is twenty twenty, remember, three elections. And cares only covers a certain portion. So and we did have uh. That type of postage and we had just general postage that for different things that we do. That have nothing to do, really do with mailing a ballots, but just things that we have to mail around all the time anyway, that wouldn't be subject to cares dollars. Advertising we have to do every year, we always have some level of supplies, this is not inconsistent with what we've. What we've had in other prior years, we did not actually pay for training. But they registered for the training and then, of course, that was canceled due to COVID. But I put it in here for the purpose of saying, what does it cost to do an election? Our maintenance and our eh maintenance and our licensing for our tabulators, for our high-speed scanners, for all of our poll pads. Is sixty two thousand dollars every other year. We do bring in some meals for the folks that are here camped out days and nights and weekends. And then every year we have to turn on modems that go on every single tabulator that will transmit results. Um through cell cellular uh service and again, that modem cost is a. Three-year modem cost, or three election modem cost, so from the county budget, we have almost three hundred and sixteen thousand. Go to the next. And. We're here, the cow bell's ringing, our grand total of what it cost us this year, whether. Cost us being federal, state, county, regardless, we know that this money is. Doesn't come out of thin air, so somebody had to pay for it and it's all of us. Over five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And the reason I talk about this and I want to show this to you is there are gonna be some expectations moving forward. On. Do we do a drop off locations? That would be number one, do, did people like this absentee process so much that our norm going forward. Probably not gonna be fifty percent if there's no node eh pandemic, but. Is it gonna be forty percent, is it gonna be thirty to forty percent, I don't know, all I heard from a lot of our voters is this was. Perfect. I I didn't know that this existed, this is the way I'm always gonna vote, I'm like, oh no. So anyway, we have to be able to respond to that and so as we get into twenty twenty two, what's that number gonna be? Go on. What are we doing next year, I would love to say nothing, we are taking the year off, but we know that this is a, this is a census. We just got done with our census, so that means we're gonna be doing some redistricting, that process starts with the feds. The feds have to redistrict their congressional lines first and all their federal lines. Then it goes to the state who will have to do all of their lines um based for their representatives and their senators. After that, it goes to the cities and the townships who have to set their precincts and everybody. In that order has to follow those lines, so you don't cross, a precinct doesn't cross cross uh state. Boundaries, a state boundary doesn't cross a congressional boundary. And the the precincts and the county doesn't. Cross over precinct boundaries, so a precinct is either in one con- one commissioner district or the other, not a split. So we talked about this a little bit and that process is coming up. Um next year, by the time it gets to the county, it is generally about late April. Cause it'll start with the feds, get to the cities, I'm thinking at about the end of March. Beginning of April, they usually take about a month to set theirs and then, or maybe six weeks, but i- in that. April, end of April, May timeframe is when we will start our conversation on who's gonna be part of this redistricting committee. And uh what are some of the expectations moving forward? Conversation, you know, we have to do soil and water conservation as well, last time. They didn't like the commissioner districts and they set their own, so we have to think about, do we want those to be held constant and the same and similar? For if nothing else, ease. Um or or do we not care? And of course, we will have um all of these offices except the president rerunning in twenty twenty two. So it'll still be a very, very busy election year in twenty twenty two, even though it's not a presidential race. Because everybody's gonna want to either gain seats or lose seats and I think some of this uh. Politic- political motives are gonna continue into that twenty twenty two year. What I think voters will be expecting, because we heard loud and clear from them uh in in a lot, a huge amount of numbers. Is they love the the drop off sites, thought that was Queen B. They also loved their city in-person voting locations. Um we had a lot of great comments on and appreciation for those folks serving in those in-person voting absentee locations. And we have some others that are, two years ago, we talked to all the cities, we said, at some given point, you need to set this up, if nothing else. We're here for the voter, as much as we don't want the administrative nightmare. We generally make decisions on behalf of the people that we serve, whether it be a taxpayer, whether it be just a citizen or a customer. Or whether it be a voter and so what does that mean? Do we say, again, the county auditor has the right to delegate to cities to assume this and of course, I don't do that without. Having conversations and I don't do that without the full support of my board. The other, the communities, the cities that had taken that over said that they. Thought that that went very well, they could see that their voters really were appreciative, that they could go to their city halls and vote. Like most other normal um metrodis- metropolitan counties. So Bell Plain, I put Credit River in parentheses because they're supposedly becoming a city. Elko, New Market and New Craig's, we have to have conversations with those and those conversations have already started in some fashion with those clerks. Or the clerks have reached out to us saying, you know, we really need to think about how we can do this strategically. But think about that commissioners as we move into next year, because we want them to be prepared and we want them to budget accordingly. and we want them to budget accordingly for twenty-twenty-two if our thought is that those cities should be conducting their own absentee. You can go on.
Listen, yeah, I do wanna add, we talked about it at Services yesterday, Scale Services and several of the administrators spoke about their fear of taking it on and how it really went well. Uh, their staff handled it well and they were very appreciative of the county staff in the training and providing the support that was needed for them to do it well. And I think they all pretty much appreciated being able to serve their residents, so.
I agree.
I think it went really well and the comments were very positive.
I totally agree.
Cindy, this is Wolf. Hey, um, so just a couple of observations. It was, so it was about six dollars per vote. I guess from what you have.
When you look at all the overhead and.
Yeah. And then, um, so we had more absentee votes this year than all the other years put together?
We did, yeah.
Is that about right?
It was, it was an amazing, yeah. We, again, we have generally somewhere between, I, our high years. Do you guys remember two years ago when we were in the old conference center?
Yeah.
The lines down the sidewalks? And two years ago, we had a little over twelve-thousand people come through our absentee location, bu- either by mail and or in person. And it was that type of debacle. Could you imagine trying to manage something with almost fifty-thousand voters? We would need a roadshow, man.
And then also, there were long lines at Credit River, um, a- and you probably knew that and it's probably because they should actually be two precincts, but were there long lines in the other places?
We heard only of, of, like, Spring Lake Township had n- n- almost no lines. Belle Plain City, which is more voters than Credit River, had really no long lines, no wait.
But do they have two precincts or one?
They have one.
They're just one, okay.
They have one precinct, they have two tabulators though.
Oh.
They bought an extra tabulator so that their people didn't have to wait. This year though, I will tell you, let's, we'll talk a little bit about Credit River. Now, one of the issues with Credit River that somebody used an ink pen that got ink on the scanner, read it, the scanner heads. And the tabulator, of course, wouldn't scan them. They would just keep rejecting them because they're like, we can't read this. Well, the scanner head, thankfully, because we don't want it accepting a ballot if it can't read it. So it would kept, kept rejecting it and they were, this line just got super long. Well, Credit River's in a bad lo- they're, they're, their township hall's in a bad location anyway. Their, their lines got excessively long. The county kept trying to work with them, saying, do this, do this, do this, and then finally it's like, the heck with that. We're gonna come out there. We're gonna take a cleaning sheet, now their lesson learned, send cleaning sheets to, with all the tat- with all of the clerks from here on out in case someone uses an ink pen that smears. Cause it'll smear that scanning head and we can't clean it. We got out there, we took that, that sheet. You either get it wet, you're supposed to use, put a little bit of, uh, like alcohol solution on it, put it in that scanner head, pulled it out. It was filthy dirty and then everything was fine. So we give people marking pens for a reason. They need to use those felt-tip pens and not and I know COVID and all this, they said, no, I'm gonna use my own pen in my purse. But if that pen mars up that scanner head, we have an issue. So Credit River had a scanning issue. People were challenging the clerk saying, we're not putting them in the auxiliary bin cause we don't trust our vote will get through that tabulator. We got a call from the sheriff's office saying, hello, these people are parked on both sides twenty-one. You Scott County elections need to get out there and do something about that. It's a road. We can't, they didn't have the parking, they don't have the parking. They were told at least six years ago, they should split their precinct. Their location is horrible. If, and Credit River is a big township, find someplace else. Get it off of a busy four-lane with no parking. Belle Plain has a lot of.
Four lane, it's a two-lane. Sixty-eight, it's not twenty-one, yeah.
It's right on twenty-one. No, it's on sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight, yeah.
Sixty.
I parked on.
In a busy road.
In the ditch.
Yeah, but, yeah, people, they just said it's a death hazard. Someone's gonna get hit.
There was no lighting out there. I mean, it got dark at five fifteen and it's like, I can't believe someone's not gonna get hit here. It was bad.
Right, but we, other than that, you know, we heard the rest of them moved pretty good. Yeah, Credit River was a debacle. That much we will, we will agree with. But if they become their own city and if they conduct their own absentee, they will probably have to get a bigger facility.
Cindy, remind us who represents Credit River here.
I know, right? Right.
Cindy, remind us who asked Mike for an opinion?
All right, we're getting, we're getting the, uh, we're getting the hook here. Um, so I have, I have one, uh, you know, maybe a few last questions, but like, I, I have said all along, like, because it's our county and we know the people here and like, I have a high degree of confidence in our county, cause that's the only one we have any kind of, uh, influence over. And the recount, it's not a recount, it's a part of an audit. What we normally do, all, apparently all of our counties do that. We're not doing that because this is a crazy election. We're not doing it because we think something went haywire. We're doing it because it's our standard ops. This is what we do.
Absolutely, every year. I mean, every even year.
And, you know, we have confidence in you, so sitting here today, is there anything you're like, oh my goodness? Something crazy's out there. Like, you're sleeping at night, finally.
Oh, like a baby.
Yeah.
Well, there's reasons I'm not sleeping, but it has, has nothing to do with, with the elections anymore. There, th- those nights after I would say, uh, probably after the week of the, of the seven, sixth, that, when that week was over, I think that I slept better.
And, and if there's anything goofy, this Thursday thing, we'll, we'll bear that out.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Anything else? Online, in studio? Um, all right. Thank you very much. We are gonna keep on a keeping on. Uh, item number ten, committee reports and commissioner updates, gonna swing down to my right. Commissioner Weckman-Brecke, please.
Thank you. Mister Chair, um, November third, we had a workshop after our board meeting. Um, on November tenth, had the monthly, um, labor management meeting, um, with AFSMI. A lot of discussion and concerns just about employees and, uh, exposure to COVID. When they have COVID, when they're out, when they're not out. Obviously, we have, um, some critical areas of the county where employees, uh, are, could be exposed and need to go out into homes. So just a lot of discussion about that, a lot of discussion about policies. Later that day, on November tenth, I had my monthly meeting with the county administrator. On November eleventh, had the Scott County Historical Society Board Meeting. Um, I think something interesting to note that I think is going to press today, or I've seen it in the press today is that the Scott County, um, Historical Society had had a rifle that had belonged to Ch- Chief Shakapi that they've donated back to, um, the, the tribe for their own display and keeping, um, in their cultural center. Uh, the board made that decision a few months ago, right thing to do. Um, and, and I think, uh, a lot of people will weigh in on that. November thirteenth, um, the scale meeting, remotely of course. On November sixteenth, uh, all afternoon yesterday was on the AMC Health and Human Services Committee going through, um, platform changes and legislative priorities. Then yesterday evening had, um, Human Services Resource Council and then the Scott County Fair Annual Meeting. End of my report.
All right, I'm gonna look all the way down to my virtual left. Uh, Commissioner Beard.
I think I heard you call Commissioner Beard. Is that right, Mister Chairman?
Yep, yep.
Alright, okay. Um, let's see, uh, since November third, um, uh, county, with the county board meeting, of course, the third, on the fifth, uh, we had a virtual, um, Scott County Transportation Committee meeting on the, um, and I'm sorry, I, th- this is on my iPhone because I'm on my iPad where my calendar is, so I'm struggling to find it off my phone here for you. Um, on the tenth of November, had the, um, CAP Agency Board Meeting, the virtual meeting that, uh, evening, uh, for the CAP Agency. On the twelfth, the, uh, Transportation Alliance, uh, actually, I attended that, um, meeting, uh, in person. There were about twenty of us who were socially distanced over at the, uh, um, Intercontinental in St. Paul and then about a hundred people online, uh, for the Annual Transportation Alliance Board Meeting. Um, and that evening, the one sixty-nine executive, uh, board, committee board meeting. I was able to attend that. Friday, the thirteenth, uh, uh, meeting at, or attended the scale meeting. And then later in that afternoon, uh, in person, the can- the county canvassing meeting that was spoken of just a few moments ago. Uh, yesterday, uh, Monday, the sixteenth, a brief appearance via Zoom or whatever product we were using for the drug court. Uh, but then I had to bail out for the U of M's, uh, Transportation Economic Development Committee that I serve on and, uh, participated in that meeting for the next, uh, two hours. And, uh, Mister Chairman, I think there's probably a couple of other things in there that I'm missing, but, uh, if it's significant, I'll forward it to JJ. Now that she's in charge of the clerk, clerk office, and that's my report.
Sounds good. Let's, uh, continue with Commissioner Ulrich, please. You're on mute.
Yep, no, I, there we go, I, uh, had to get off mute. Uh, okay, on the, uh, fourth, I attended the, uh, Parks Commission, the fifth, uh, mon- monthly meeting with the administrator. Um, we then had our Scott County Transportation Committee that same day and we're still concerned about the regional solicitation and whether we will get any projects. It's kind of an all or nothing kind of approach to us because, uh, we're, we're applied for ten million. If we get five or partial, um, that project is so expensive that we really can't afford to, to do the project. So we're, we're gonna push for the ten and and then step aside if we, we don't get the ten and, and reapply in another, uh, solicitation. On the sixth, the Scale Executive Committee. The ninth, the STA Board Meeting, the tenth, the CDA. And, uh, one thing that we, I give the CDA an update each, uh, each time I'm there as the liaison and one thing that I was told to tell them that we're gonna work with the Oped uh, funding to help repay the ERTs sooner rather than later. They sort of extended themselves, uh, when that ERTs low bid came in and, and they went with the low bid. They thought they had four or five-hundred-thousand dollars extra to work with. They made other decisions and then found out that bid was, there was a mistake in the bid, so they're really wanting to be repaid and so I, I think we were saying we're going to as soon as we can with that source of funding. The twelfth, um, Fish Meeting, we had a presentation on the Veterans Court, thirteenth, uh, Scale. We talked about legislative priorities and there was a presentation, excellent one by Leslie Vermillion, on our Scott County Building Projects, the sixteenth, uh, Scale Services Delivery. They've been talking quite a bit of mobile, about a mobile field force. This is where our officers would receive, um, equipment that they don't have in case there was a, um, big event, um, where they needed to respond. It'd be thicker body armor, different kind of helmet, different stuff like that, and then some common training. That's gonna be coming back to the Scale Executive Committee and then it'll be worked through the councils and county board to, uh, to discuss the concept. They would talked also more about a lobbying, uh, effort through scale and this would be a, a very specific, very targeted effort uh, related to, um, I don't know what the term is now, but it's impact fees for streets and stuff like that. I don't, there's a different term they're using now. Um, maybe Leslie can tell me what that term is. I think we all struggle with, with.
Pay for safe roads.
What's, oh, pay for safe roads, is it? Yeah, okay, well, that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Wolf.
Thank you, Mister Chair. On the fifth, the New Market Township had their monthly meeting. Uh, it was a little later because of the election. They have, uh, one of the new things out there is they have a new sound and video system. Very nice. There were a lot of echoing and very poor picture on, uh, stuff, so it, uh, part of the Kira's funding. On the ninth, Credit River had their monthly meeting. On, uh, the, after that, the planning, uh, zoning. They had, um, Sand Creek Township is, um, Jennifer Jensen, I don't know if you, you know her, of course. They're, they wanna do a little bit of like a agritourism deal out there. So, uh, look for that. Uh, on the eleventh, met with, uh, Cedar Lake Township Supervisor, talk about the election. They had, uh, um, I don't know if it's completely official, so I won't say the name yet, but, um, they had a write-in out there because one of the supervisors decided not to run and nobody, uh, filed to run for it, so, uh, they had to count that up. Anyhow, then, uh, I thirty-five met, uh, Solutions on the twelfth. Uh, Spring Lake Township had their meeting that evening. Uh, the scale meeting on the thirteenth, Administrator, um, Planning Zoning also on the thirteenth. On the sixteenth, Credit River had a very busy day. They had, um, the Administrative Law Judge um, to talk about the township to city. So there's a lot of testifying between the county, uh, the Township Attorney, the Township, uh, Chairman, um, they had their, uh, planning person. Um, in fact, Luke Henon, our, uh, Sheriff, had to testify about law enforcement for that, uh, area. Uh, so that was that. And then, uh, after that, Prior Lake had a, uh, uh, their workshop and, uh, meeting. And, uh, at the meeting, there was a swearing-in of Kim Churchill, who is the newest, uh, council member of, uh, Prior Lake, uh, City Council. Also at that meeting, uh, our very own, uh, Katie Maras and Judge Wilton came and, uh, in the five-minute comment, talked about, um, uh, Prior Lake was gonna put in a license, a vaping shop and, uh, they just kinda came and said, uh, you know, this vaping stuff has fallen into the wrong hands with kids and there's all these flavors out there, bubble gum and, uh, um, this waffles and syrup, whatever. I just, you hear these names, it's like and they said, you know, clearly they're designed for kids to, you know, consume and, um, so, you know, they start with the vaping and they get to the next, you know, marijuana's gonna be legal in Minnesota and most of the country probably in the next couple of years and then they go to, you know, heavier duty or, you know, whether it's whatever it gets to meth and it's a bad deal. So, uh, and they end up in our court system and they just keep on regurgitating. So then after that, uh, Credit River had another meeting and it was the, uh, public comment to, uh, comment about, uh, so the public residents, uh, could, you know, say whether or not they liked the idea of becoming a city, uh, and, uh, most people thought it was a great idea. I think there was one person that, uh, was mildly, you know, opposed to it, but, uh, other than that, it seemed like everyone was for it. And so this Administrative Law Judge, the next thing is, so they have, everyone has to file comments and everything by December eleventh. Then she comes up with some sort of determination by January and then they have, I think, seventy-four days um, by state law to have an election. So they're probably, if it goes through, there will be an election. All the five board seats would be up for election and, um, uh, you know, they'd have a city council then instead of a town board supervisor, a city council and a mayor and city council members, so. Um, that's coming on very quick and it seems like it's
Oh, yeah.
Taking a while here, but, uh, it's, uh, it's wrapping up here and so I hope everything works out well with that. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, for my report, uh, on the third, we had our workshop, as was mentioned, that was also Election Day. I tried to get in, uh, old school and vote election morning, which I did. Uh, but then I, you know, when you're on the ballot, it's always a little antsy. Um, so I wanted, I was curious, were the polls busy at seven-thirty? So I drove down to my precinct. It was pretty open. I drove around the parking lot twice. I'm like, ah, I should go and say thanks. Is that weird? I'm on the ballot. I don't, I win it. Said thanks. It was the same election judges from eight o'clock in the morning. They're at almost eight o'clock at night. Um, so I stopped in a couple of other precincts that were still open to say, hey, thanks for doing this, cause we weren't sure how that was all gonna play out with all this thing and, um, yeah, they seemed appreciative. So it was a, this, it's kind of those unsung heroes getting that election done. Um, after our meeting, after the workshop, had my monthly administrator meeting. Uh, on the fifth, had a meeting with, uh, Jody Brennan with Shakapi, Shaco City Council. It was a good meeting, just try to keep those relationships open. I know we haven't, you know, the Rona and everything else, haven't had our court liaise as often. Uh, so it was just good to kind of do a one-on-one, uh, with her. So thank you, Jody, whatever camera's on, I don't know. Um, on the tenth, Prior Lake, Spring Lake Watershed met, uh, their administrator. Diane is, uh, retiring at the end of November. I'm not sure if she got any of these though. I don't, I'm looking at Deb. So they are in active search mode to try to replace her. Um, so congratulations to Diane for a great career and enjoying retirement. Um, eleventh, met again with Leslie, cause I didn't get it all the first time. I needed to be spoon-fed again, that whole thing, you, you get that. Twelfth was Fish, uh, was mentioned, um, Wilton, Judge Wilton was there talking about Vets Court and we had our Zoom meeting, um, I guess on the sixteenth as well to actually see that firsthand, which, you know, most of us have been to the drug court and so forth. Um, going back to the thirteenth, Scale, Leslie. Going back to the thirteenth, Scale, Leslie, awesome job with that presentation. Because I, I think people were really, it was, it was interesting. It was informative. People were really appreciative of it. Thanks for that. And then, I guess it was yesterday, Prior Lake Workshop. I missed the city hall portion of that. But, yeah, congratulations to Kim Churchill. That completes my report. Can I look down to my left? Leslie, for your county administrator report?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, and I want to thank Tracy, too, for helping on Scale on Friday. And I also thought Claire did a really nice job with the legislative, so it was a good morning for the county, I think, in presenting. First off, most of you probably didn't even know, because it went so seamlessly, that Minfast replaced Minlars yesterday. If you remember, when Minlars came out, people were complaining and calling you and lined up in the hallways. Our staff should be commended. They were recognized for their training that they did. But yesterday, the motor vehicle system replacement, it went well. Our staff are pleased, they're trained in it, they're operating it. And what a difference in the transition between systems. So congrats to those folks down in customer service. The other one is the property tax notices. Most people should have received those yesterday. I really want to stress that if people have any questions, please call the number on there. There's a number for you to call and reach out via phone, because you'll be able to get ahold of somebody quicker. And with the issues of meeting face-to-face and those types of things, we really hope folks will just reach out, contact that number, and our staff will be happy to discuss your concerns or, or go over that tax notice with you. So please do that. The other thing is that we didn't, you know, we were directed to take a look at COVID in hospitals. We still are working on that. We'll probably bring something back at the next board meeting, as it took longer to work through that with everything going on with their, with their staff as well. And then next Thursday and Friday, we will be closed for the Thanksgiving holiday. Just a reminder that these buildings will be closed. And following this meeting today, we have an environmental health work session on some of our solid waste issues that I think is an important discussion for you this afternoon, so.
All right. Thank you very much. Looking down to my right, Mr. County Attorney.
You're done.
Nice. All right, that puts us to item number.
Motion to adjourn.
We had a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? I would just say, before we do adjourn, it is Thanksgiving next week. There's always something, somewhere to be thankful for, and I can't help but wonder if that's what it's all about, so be thankful. All right, JJ, take us out.
Commissioner Weckman-Brucki. Commissioner Wolf.
Aye.
Commissioner Beard.
Aye.
Commissioner Beer.
Aye.
Commissioner Ulrich.
Aye.
We are adjourned.